Good morning. Good morning. I'll call this call this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order and ask that we keep the frivolity to a minimum in the chambers. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll to establish quorum and read the Metro Cable statement.
Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, December 15th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. To make a comment in person, fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment, prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at (916) 874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you, Philo. Everybody, please, in the chambers, stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to remember that which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to our Grinch in the audience. Hopefully, that's not a reflection of the atmosphere in the chambers today. We are going to start with off-agenda public comments. That's an opportunity for people to come and provide public comment on items that are not specifically on the timed agenda. That includes the consent items. If you're here on one of the consent items, you will have a chance to speak to those items directly. We have pulled Item 5 off of the consent agenda. We will be discussing taking that item separately after the agenda or after the consent items. So with that, I will ask Madam Clerk to please call the first speaker on off-agenda public comment.
Okay. First speaker is Ruby Locke.
This is my first speak here.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Ruby Locke, and I am an employee at Sutter Center for Psychiatry in Sacramento, and I have been an employee for over 35 years there. My God. I'm here to ask your support in helping us gain a fair contract with Sutter Center for Psychiatry as workers. We have recently held a one-day strike, which was December 6th this year, 2023, in order we are trying to negotiate a contract and fair bargaining from Sutter Center for Psychiatry in good faith. It is important that you understand that we are one of the hospitals in the area that help in mental health. Our patient population, it has changed over the years. It has changed in the sense of sick patients, mental patients, high turnover, and we are asking for fair wages and fair staffing. So I'm, thank you for your comments, and please support us.
Thank you.
Next is Lindsay.
My name is Lindsay Dow, and I live in District 5. As a constituent of Sacramento County for over 32 years and employed at Sutter Center for Psychiatry for 16 years, I speak on behalf of over 150 healthcare employees, and the purpose of this meeting is to ask for your support to advocate for a fair contract with Sutter Health. It is my ethical and moral responsibility to ask for you to look beyond the narrative that Sutter has given and to seek the honest truth of what's currently happening in the mental health system within the Sacramento County. Sacramento County serves several contracts, which provides over millions of dollars in funding for mental health services. Sutter Center for Psychiatry serves vulnerable adults, adolescents, and children, even as young as age five, who suffer from severe, persistent, and complex mental health illnesses. Our administrative operations, the management of fiscal allocation of funds, unethical management, policies, and practices have a direct impact on those we serve and those write services. Facts do not lie. There has been an increase in patient harm, increase in patient injuries, increase in staff injuries, and increase in unsafe working conditions. We need more staffing. We need safe environments. We need honesty and transparency on how Sutter Center for Psychiatry manage their funds. Individuals from all walks of life enter our hospital as patients, but they leave as members of the community. Safe care, high-quality treatment equals and have a direct correlation to safer communities. We ask that you support us in holding Sutter accountable for how they allocate public funds to ensure that they prioritize safe patient care and safe environments for healthcare workers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen?
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Ellen Cress, and I'm here on behalf of one of their colleagues. His name is Cesar Mardonas, and he is a licensed clinical social worker here at the Medical Center who works with the Sutter Center for Psych. He is constantly going through assessment and meeting with the public and folks who end up in the emergency room who need psychiatric help, and he helps them come through the psychiatric hospital at Sutter Center for Psych. And so what Cesar says is, he thinks one of the most important things for people who work at Sutter Center for Psychiatry are the union brothers and siblings are really invested in making it one of the best places for mental health care, right? They want to be a part of the mental health environment and ecosystem here in this county. That's why they came together two years ago, because they want it to be what we always thought it could be, which is the best mental health support for patients and families, both in this county and in the surrounding area. One of the best ways to make sure that that continues is that we can take care of ourselves and our families. So he is asking you, these coworkers behind you are asking you, and 145 of their colleagues are asking you, to support their fight in a fair contract. Not only a fair contract, but a good contract that helps them continue to be citizens in this county and to help the mental health ecosystem here at Sacramento. He says, "Our union sisters and brothers are here for each other, so we could be here for the families and the patients that we serve here at Sutter Center for Psych." So once again, we urge you to help support us in settling a fair contract with Sutter. I also have fact sheets and other information from our strike the other day that I'm happy to leave with for you.
You can leave that with the clerk.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Debbie.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. Hey, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, all the holidays are important. Just wanted to say, I'm here on behalf of our Constitutional Study Group. We've been meeting for twice a month for over two years, and we've been studying our constitutions, and we are wanting to present you with a gift of the maxims of law. We have been learning that God bestowed our rights on us, and from that, we established a government, and from the government, it's about law, and no one is above the law. The other maxim that's really important is ignorance of the law is no excuse. What I discovered was the maxims of law, there's 1,600 of them, and if we don't know what the law is, we can't follow them. So I'm giving you this gift for education purposes only, and I just wanted to read three of the maxims and invite you to our, we're starting up a new Constitution Study Group in January, and there's the website right there. And anyway, one of my, three of my favorite maxims are 18A on common law. Those things which are derogatory to the common law are to be strictly interpreted. And then in Section 47, under freedom and liberty, well, I'm a little ahead of myself. Under government, 51B says, "The government is to be subject to the law, for the law makes the government." And then, the last one I'll share with you today is 86M. No right is held more sacred or is more carefully guarded by the common law than the right of every individual to possession and control of his own person, free from all restraint or interference of others unless by a clear unquestionable authority of law. So Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and let the joviality begin.
Thank you, Debbie.
Okay. Next, we have Charles.
Good morning. I wanted to say, because I got contact, for some reason, the clip that I was speaking last week made the news for like 10 seconds. So I want to clarify that when I come and speak here, I am speaking after thousands of hours of research and hundreds of hours actually talking with homeless people. I'm not just speaking out of turn. And when I was talking about the homeless organization last week, it wasn't just about Miller Park. It's, like I said, hundreds of hours of talking to homeless people, and I hear stories that I wouldn't say out loud here, so I'm not going to. But there is a lot of issues across all the organizations, but that one in particular, I get a lot of conversations, a lot of stuff that I have to go back and forth with, and it's stuff you guys will never hear, because the people, homeless people that are telling me this stuff, sometimes it implicates them in crimes, so they don't want to talk to, you know, Sheriff Department or DCR teams about some of this stuff. But anyway, when I come and talk to you guys or speak about homeless stuff, it is after doing all the background research on these things. It's not just, I'm not just making it up as I go. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Ryan.
Good morning. Happy holidays. Well, to piggyback on what he said real quick, you guys do got to fix this homeless problem, because it's pretty bad, maybe not where you guys live or where you guys travel, but based off of some of the limitations that you put on us here, it's, the homeless population is growing. I know a lady had shared a story with me about her situation and how she just continually gets raped, because when she goes to the police, the police look at her like she deserves it for being out there, and she's just like a, like little helpless old lady, and she has no defense, and she's getting raped almost every night. So you guys take it how you will with that one. Nonetheless, the reason that I'm here is because the holidays are coming up, it's about to be Christmas. I try not to take too long, because I know, Pat Hume, you don't like me even using my full two minutes, let alone going over it. Nonetheless, with that said, Pat, do you still want to apologize? Have you been educated on how to treat the people? Or do you still feel like you're better than all of us because you've been voted up there? I'm just curious.
I like your hat, Ryan.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. So you can still compliment people, so that's good to know. You just can't answer questions. That's good to know. Nonetheless, since you guys support racist acts and defend racist acts, hell, even partake in racist acts against minorities, oh, wait, and promote others who also partake in racist acts against minorities, I just wanted to bring you guys a Christmas gift. Now, if they're the wrong size, you got your wives, probably stitch them up so they fit, but for Christmas, got you guys this white sheet, so you guys can use it how you feel according.
Next, we have Christina.
And Madam Clerk, can you please remove the item from the podium? And let's close the queue to, for public comment.
Let me bring that down. Thank you. That's good.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Christina. I'm a union representative on behalf of 2,000 janitors among SEIU USWW that represents over 40,000 workers from San Diego up to the Oregon border, and I'm here today to, well, I will submit this document as well through the link so that it's on record, but we're here today, I am among a few janitors who work specifically at the airport. They work on all shifts, stay shift, swing shift, and graveyard, and the reason why we are here today with SEIU USWW is to express concern about your impact regarding the bidding process and the decision for the janitors at the Sacramento Airport. These janitors have been here 20-plus years. I myself, as a union representative, received notice that the county was considering both responsible and non-responsible union and non-union bidders, and I'm here to express concern about that, because these janitors rely on healthcare benefits, decent pay to work at the airport, and to be able to afford that and afford a decent wage for their families as well. As you guys know, the janitorial industry is notorious for low wages, exploitation, sexual harassment, among other violations as well. So we're here to express, more than anything, to request that you guys consider a responsible contractor. I will submit this and a list of close to 30 responsible contract bidders that California considers more than anything responsible, and who would be signatory to what is already in place here at the airport. And that is why I'm here today. We came last week with a few janitors, but the comment had already closed. So on behalf of almost 100 janitors at the airport and 20,000 workers statewide, I will follow up. This is in District 1, so I believe, Ms. Serna, that is your area at the airport. I went last week, and I left notice and a letter with your secretary. I will follow up with, by email as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Our last speaker is Elizabeth.
Good morning, and thank you for your service to Sacramento County. Appreciate the chance to speak publicly. I'm just here this morning to bring awareness to an invisible population of families who are providing shelter and food to persons who happen to be living with serious mental illness and/or substance use, and that do not have a voice and are difficult to collect data upon. There are HIPAA laws, do a great job protection, but we, during my volunteer work with NAMI, my volunteer work with the Community Wellness Response Team, I continue to hear stories of the difficulties to get services for a person when they have food and housing, whether it's provided by a group home or whether it's provided by families. Of most recent concern to me is with my Wellness Recovery Response Team Advisory Board. We heard about a family of a second-grade teacher who tried to call for our 988 Wellness Response Alternative to 911, didn't qualify, called 911, and ended up, because there was a roof and food, the officers were not allowed to get psychiatric services for this person. And then from there, the person became, it wasn't able to be de-escalated, accidentally ended in jail. So if we, if we feed it all the way back to the original issue, is this invisible population is providing a tremendous amount of invisible services, of free house, we do service work that does not even count at anywhere, and yet our hands are tied when we actually need the help. So I'm giving voice to that. I've met these people in NAMI, I've worked alongside, I continue to work in that area, and I believe we need a voice, even though it's difficult to get to us. So I'm raising that awareness, hope you can help fill that gap. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And what I would say is, you know, these, some of these anecdotal situations are helpful to us as we identify issues with our, with our system and try to improve it. So I would encourage you to reach out to whichever supervisor represents the district or the district. Thank you. That's it for public comment?
That's it. That concludes your public comments for off-agenda.
So I think what we will do is, since we have a lot of people in here for the presentations, let's just skip things. Let's go to the presentations now.
Okay.
And we'll do the consent, because I think the consent, especially the Item 5, that we pulled off consent, will take a little more discussion. So let's start with the first presentation, and I believe many in the audience are here for that first presentation, if I'm not mistaken, for Sheila Boxley.
Yeah, so this is off of your addendum agenda, Item 5, Presentation of Resolution Honoring Sheila Boxley for her dedicated services in child abuse prevention.
And Michelle, you're presenting on this one?
Good to see you.
Oh, let me, let me stop. Actually, actually, I made a mistake. Thank you to my, my colleagues up here. We have to vote to approve these resolutions.
I don't know.
First, they may not, I mean, it may not, it's Sheila's.
I think you can go out on board.
Sheila, yours is, so just, just keep that in mind as you make the presentation. The approval will come afterwards, hopefully, so.
Yeah. Secret vote.
Now, good morning. It's a pleasure to see you again, and I have an apology. I do not have a COVID-19 report for you this morning. What I do have is a recommendation that you approve that presentation when the vote comes up. But what I want to do is take a little trip through history. If you go back to 1996, 97, we had several child abuse tragic deaths that caused a great stir in this community. And the memory that still haunts me, I was the Deputy Director of Health and Human Services at that time, the precursor to the Child, Adult, and Family Services and Health Services Department. And because of the tremendous caseload increase, we went from a pretty consistent level of 3,000 foster care cases to 6,000 in about a year because of a change that your board approved at the recommendation of my predecessor to give the social workers more flexibility in removing children from risky family situations. And given the tragedies, the social workers really did that, and the caseload increase caused a tremendous workload increase for the staff. That was actually about the time that Michelle started with family unification.
It wasn't my fault.
What we needed was something to strengthen families, keep children safe, and reduce the incidence of future tragedies. Under the leadership of Sheila Boxley, who came to the Child Abuse Prevention Center shortly after that time, the county and community organizations collaborated together to investigate programs nationwide to see what we could do here in Sacramento County to reduce child deaths and strengthen families and reduce the overall incidence of child abuse. There were many organizations, many people, both in the county and outside that were helping, but it was Sheila that was the driving force. May I have the overhead, please? With this broad coalition, the program you know as Bertha &amp; Beyond, with home visitation and nine family resource centers, was created. This picture is the first birthday party of Bertha &amp; Beyond at the Rancho Cordova Family Resource Center. Now, if you look in the background, you can see the Bertha &amp; Beyond logo. You see that footprint? That footprint is from Sheila's son. That's just one of many reasons why she is known as the godmother of Bertha &amp; Beyond. And this picture is exactly what we wanted to see, a healthy, happy, safe child, and two happy, healthy, smiling directors. Sheila took what had been an inconsequential community organization and developed it into a growing, dynamic entity that had services for not only Sacramento County residents, but also statewide and internationally. It was something I could never have imagined, the first time I went out there and met the folks and saw the place before Sheila got there. What she has done with the center is just amazing. The programs that Sheila brought to CAPSY not only helped reduce risk to children and kept them safe, but it also developed community capital, human capital out in our communities. We saw so much growth in the staff at Bertha &amp; Beyond, the peer professional staff drawn from the community. Because of the training experience and the AmeriCorps educational benefits they received, many of them went on to higher education and careers in social work and other fields, some with the county. This is just a small sampling of what Sheila accomplished during her tenure. It has been a pleasure to work with her through the years and call her a friend. Sacramento County truly is a better place because of Sheila.
Thank you, Jim. You haven't changed much, really. Yeah, exactly. So I got to benefit from the great partnership established in the late 90s. As Jim said, I came on as a social worker in 1996, and I was an ER supervisor in 2000. And I looked back recently at the number of kids we had in care, and it was 6,000, because at the time, we were removing so many kids. And quite frankly, we did harm during that time, because we removed far too many. Today, because of the prevention cabinets, because of this collaborative, because of our, our family resource centers with the partnership of CAPSY, they are the heart of our prevention and our safety net here in our county. We're now down to 1,230 kids in foster care, which is, is just a great testament to the power of prevention. And when we strengthen families, we strengthen our community, and Sheila has been such a force, a driving force behind that, locally and at the state and federal level, and we owe so much to her. And also, Sheila, just thank you for the ongoing partnership with, with our department, with First 5, with so many different community-based organizations. You will definitely be missed.
I think, I think we might have changed a little bit.
So.
Yeah. Perfect. Yes.
Floor is yours, Sheila.
The whole thing, right? But we just want to say thank you and recognize you, your leadership over the last 26 years, and even before you were just gearing up by the time you took over CAPSY. So thank you, thank you, and please say some, say some words.
I will say some words. I'm usually much happier talking about the wonderful things that other people have done or need to do, so this isn't always the easiest, easiest thing for me. Yes, many, many things have happened because of the Child Abuse Prevention Center and because of all the partnerships, and those partnerships have thrived even as people leave and there's new leaderships and so on, they have continued to thrive. And there's some amazing people back there behind me, well, including some of my family members, but, but also this team of people that you see over there, and including all those who came before them, have been at this, at this work because it's part of their heart. They don't get a whole lot of wonderful stock, stock investments from their organization or anything like that, but they do the work because they care about it. And I reflect on one of our, our members who works very, very hard with a population of families who have particularly serious kinds of situations, and she's talked about, and we have a great video of her, which maybe we'll send to you so you can see, but she talked about, oh, it was really hard, and we got all these things done, and we had to go overnight, and we, so on, and I kept in touch with the mom and, and so on, and I still in touch with her many years later, and they were in a car, and they were all, she was pregnant, and she had two little children, and they were trying to get by in 24 hours. In 24 hours, they had a place to live, they had a voucher for long-term housing, they had a crib, they had supports, they had food, and they've thrived. And she said, "I'm so lucky to have my job." And that's exactly how I have felt. I am so lucky to have had this opportunity. As a former governor said, "The psychic rewards are really kind of a good deal," you know? Instead of money, you're getting that. Well, you know what? I think the psychic rewards are, in fact, the most important thing, because those will be the memories and the things that I'm most proud of in my life. And I am so appreciative to your board and your predecessors on the board, who have been so welcoming and willing to listen and to take part and to participate in the work that we've done, as well as many in your staff now and before. So thank you so very much for this honor.
Thank you, Sheila. And of course, several of us would like to weigh in, so please stay there. I'll start with Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Sheila.
Hi.
I want to start by saying that your son has really big feet.
Well, I have told everyone in Berth and Beyond that since we lost our place that we were in when I had that footprint, we had toxic black mold, and I could never get it back. So I told them forevermore, that footprint has to be on the logo.
I just want to briefly say, you know, thank you for, not just your service in Sacramento County, but more importantly, to the children of Sacramento County. I think one of the first meetings that I had as a supervisor was with you, and went out and visited centers and so forth, and to see the amazing work that most people in this community, if they're lucky, don't even know exist. But you provided a lifeline, and your work on prevention has been phenomenal. I don't know how we're going to get by without you. You know, the work that you've done with children and families is literally, I mean, you can look back at a legacy where you can say, "I saved lives." And not a lot of people can do that. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, too, want to extend my sincerest gratitude to you, Sheila, for your friendship and your partnership. And for someone that joined this board without, admittedly, without much knowledge, certainly not any professional or academic background in child welfare, but in his first year on the board, really trying to focus on some of the greatest challenges that this county faced and continues to face, as it related specifically to the disparity in African-American child deaths. You were absolutely integral to the initiation of what was then the RWA CD effort and what is today the Black Child Legacy Campaign. Those efforts that have actually produced the data that, as Supervisor Kennedy mentioned, is some of the most profound data points that we have, which are lives saved. None of that could have been accomplished without the partnership with you and CAPSY and so many other community-based organizations. I also want to specifically thank you, and I see Rachel Rius in the gallery as well, for helping us find a home for one of those family resource centers in South Oak Park, which continues to do great work. And that was the necessary space for that work to flourish. And again, that is part of a very long legacy that you should proudly look back on in terms of making sure that despite your retirement, your fingerprints, not your big footprint, but your fingerprints, are going to be all over this county in terms of making sure that children have the opportunity they deserve to be free of violence, be free of hardship. And so you should know that while this may be one of the last times that we see you before this podium here, I know that each day that I come in and/or go out into the community, especially South Oak Park, I will certainly be thinking of you and all the great work that you've done. Thank you.
Well, Sheila, I will just echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I have not known you nearly as long, but you have brokered a lot of introductions for me, people in the community, and helped educate me about child welfare in Sacramento County. And you are a fierce advocate. And your legacy and your psychic rewards are very large, no doubt. So thank you for your service. And certainly, when this comes before us in consent in a few moments, I will be happy to support this resolution, of course. And our--
I'll leave it here until such time.
And our clerk asked if we, she could take some, if we would indulge your staff to have them come into the pit here and take some photos with you. And that's fine. We'll do that now. Flo, if you can orchestrate that. Madam Clerk, I'm assuming no one signed up to speak. No public comment on this item.
While we're gathering, I'd like to introduce you to Janee Swain, the new director, CEO, president, whatever. What do you call yourself?
Janee Eustace. Good afternoon. And I'm the new president and CEO of the Child Abuse Prevention Center. Thank you.
Okay, so we will expect to be meeting with you very soon.
She was one of those that was a foster child when I was director.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
While people are gathering, I'm going to go ahead and move the adoption of the resolution.
A second. And that is item--
We have a motion. We have a motion in a second. Maybe we should all stand up, but--
Yeah. God. All right, you guys squeeze in. I see you guys back there. The supervisors are back. And be careful, because that thing is really sharp. It's really sharp, and it'll cut you. Are you guys good? I'm going to try not to get-- Okay, one, two, and three. Big smiles. Deep breath, and let it out, and smile. There we go. Perfect. Okay, I'll get these pictures, and then if I can get a picture of Michelle, Mr. Hunt, and Ms. Boxley, so I can have them giving you that. Right up front. Oh, yes, don't forget. Oh, one more. I mean, about an hour. Congrats. You both well. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go to item 52. We'll just keep doing the presentation since we started, and then we'll go to the consent agenda. So item 52.
Okay. So for item 52, this is the Presentation of Resolution Recognizing December 2023 as Nigerian-American Cultural Heritage Month.
And I would invite Emmanuel and Chinieri. Is Chinieri here? Yeah, we'll skip ahead. Let's do item 53, the Calafco Presentation of Jose Enriquez.
Item 55 is the Presentation of Resolution Recognizing the Local Agency Formation Commission's Outstanding Professional Awardee, Jose C. Enriquez.
Jose, come join me down here at the podium.
So I am very honored as a representative for Sacramento County, along with Supervisor Frost, on Lafco. I'm delighted to present this resolution that will presumably be passed. To Jose Enriquez, our Executive Director of Lafco, the California Association of Local Agency Formation Commissions, Calafco recognizes a staff person for exemplary service every year with an annual award. Exemplary service is considered actions that go above and beyond that which is asked, expected, or required in the pursuit of Calafco responsibilities. On October 26, 2023, after receiving nominations from several of his colleagues at the state level from around the state, Jose Enriquez was nominated and awarded the 2023 Calafco Outstanding Professional Award by the California Association of Local Agency Formation Commissions. And so I am just very proud to present this on behalf of the Board of Supervisors for your outstanding professionalism and express our appreciation to you for the service that you provide to us here in the county of Sacramento. And sitting on Lafco, I can just say firsthand that working with you has been a great experience. You are incredibly responsive to the needs of all the board members on Lafco, and we are very lucky to have you, and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you so much.
We'll give you, can't say a few words, Jose.
Members of the Board of Supervisors, county executive officer, and members of staff, I wanted to thank you so much for this recognition. This is a pleasant surprise, and it was brought up to me twice, both when I was told that I had received this award and also when I was told about the resolution. And I do have to say that it's been wonderful working here in Sacramento County. This has been my home county for the last 30 years. So glad to be finally here. And we've done some fantastic work in the last six months. And I think any success that I've had has been really mostly due to the support that I've received from the commissions that I worked with in my time, as well as the wonderful staff that's currently back at the office working. They were not, I didn't have them come down here for this. But also the staff that I had in El Dorado, and also the partnership that we've had with the clerk of the board. So thank you so much. This is really appreciative, and this is wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is item 54. This is the Presentation of Resolution Recognizing Sacramento Region Community Foundation's 40th Anniversary.
I'll invite, let's see, and Kelly? Okay, so it's just Kelly. Kelly.
So also very honored to be introducing this resolution that will soon pass. I'm quite confident. Since 1983, the Sacramento Region Community Foundation has been recognized as the trusted steward of charitable assets, a community catalyst for meaningful change, and an advocate for shaping vital impact through philanthropy in Sacramento County. The foundation has awarded over $225 million in grants and scholarships to support local organizations, students, and other vital projects and programs in the region, and has hosted Big Day of Giving, the region's annual giving day that has raised over $57 million for hundreds of local nonprofits in Sacramento County, and has brought together over 30,000 people to donate to causes they care about in the past 11 years and counting. The foundation has grown to nearly $200 million in charitable assets, made possible by the generosity of its fund holders and donors who collaborate to make their philanthropic goals possible. And on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I am very happy to congratulate the Sacramento Region Community Foundation on its 40th anniversary, and we encourage all citizens of Sacramento County to support the work of local nonprofit organizations who help Sacramento thrive. So congratulations on your 40 years, Kelly. Thank you.
I really appreciate the opportunity to thank you. While the foundation is celebrating 40 years today, this has completely to do with the 40 decades of philanthropy. Sacramento Region Community Foundation believes that anybody can be a philanthropist. You don't have to be a millionaire, and Big Day of Giving has really shown that's possible. Hundreds, if not thousands, of nonprofits keep those dollars local. It's so very, very important. We serve as a convener in this community for four decades and are excited to celebrate the next four. Thank you so much for this recognition today. We look forward to seeing you at Big Day of Giving next year. Thank you.
Supervisor, I think we'll jump ahead to yours.
Item 55, this is the Presentation of Resolution Recognizing the Elk Grove Future Farmers of America Marketing Team on the occasion of their being named national champions.
Gracie, Madison, and Alyssa, would you like to join me down here? So while they're coming down, I'd just like to say I'm a huge supporter of 4H and FFA programs. I am an auction buyer at the county fair every year. Granted, partially that's selfish, so that I can fill my freezer with delicious organic meat, but it's also to support the programs that I believe imbue a great sense of responsibility and character to the young people that participate in it. And we have a fantastic example of that today. These three ladies you see standing before you right now are the national champions for the FFA marketing team. They won, hold off on the applause, I've got a lot to go through here. They won the state championship, obviously, which was a precursor to going back to Indiana in order to win the national championships. But I want to tell you about what they, the marketing plan that they came up for and they presented to the national team involves taking wood chips, which wineries use to infuse wood flavor oakiness into their wine, and repurposing those into smoking chips for those of us that like to barbecue meat. I also like to drink wine, in full transparency. And so what a genius idea and a way of keeping this out of the waste stream, but also repurposing it. And so I won't read the whole wherethes and all of that stuff, but just to say congratulations, and that now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, hereby-- This is not my resolution.
Congratulations on your, congratulations on your award, Sheila.
Did we approve that, by the way? Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, hereby offers hearty congratulations to the Elk Grove FFA Marketing Plan Team, its coaches, parents, fans, and supporters for an outstanding accomplishment of winning the National Marketing Plan Championship. And further, the Board extends best wishes to the Elk Grove High School instructional staff, and of course, its student body for much success in all future academic and extracurricular pursuits. I do have the framed version that the school gets to keep, but I have individual versions for each one of you. Would you like to say anything to the board at this time? Absolutely. Please.
We'd just like to say a huge thank you for being able to be recognized here, and we are very honored to be able to take this back to our school. So thank you guys very much.
Folks.
Okay, that was really pretty.
And our county exec has a comment.
Well, I first want to say congratulations to the young women that are here, but also want to honor our own Amanda Benson, who is here in her Future Farmers of America jacket for which she participated when she was a young woman as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to say congratulations to the team and how much I love the FFA organization and how much it gave to me growing up and setting the course for my career. And I was so, when I saw this on the agenda, I will never miss an opportunity to wear my blue corduroy jacket. So I want to also thank you all for giving me the opportunity to wear one of my favorite jackets, so.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, well, I think the other parties aren't here, but we will proceed with the Nigerian-American Cultural Heritage Month.
Okay. So I'm going to read that back into the record. This is the presentation of resolution recognizing December 2023 as Nigerian-American Cultural Heritage Month.
I'm happy to be joined here at the podium by Emmanuel Amanfor. And I know some of the rest of your group is running behind, but if they do show up in the end of the meeting, then we'll take some photos at the end as well. But so Nigerian-American Cultural Heritage Month is celebrated for 30 days from December 1st, 2023, through December 30th, 2023. It's recognized by a host of organizations comprised of more than 5,000 members in the Sacramento region and more than 100,000 active members in the nation. There are 371 Nigerian tribes, spread over 250 ethnic groups. And these tribes speak of a people whose history is rich and has positively influenced and continues to influence our nation, state, region, and schools through entrepreneurship, commitment to community service, deep values of justice and liberty, and social and cultural life. The Nigerian-American communities of California continue to make important contributions to our county, state, and nation while excelling in many areas. And on behalf of the Board, I am happy to recognize the month of December 2023 as Nigerian-American Cultural Heritage Month. Thank you, Emmanuel.
First, I'd like to thank everyone, County Board Supervisor Rich. Hello, everyone. So my name is Emmanuel Amanfor. I'm a community leader here in Sacramento and working with different organizations. I actually immigrated into this country at a young age. I'm Nigerian. And I'm immigrating to this country and working hard and connecting with various Nigerian organizations. They've done a lot of great things, not just for Sacramento, but also nationally. I'm pretty sure that everyone knows at least a Nigerian somewhere. So and also this recognition as far as it being Nigerian Cultural Heritage Month, it also connects with those descendants of slaves who may have done their DNA and have any percentage of being Nigerian. This is also a month for you to also celebrate. It's our opportunity for us to connect with those to be able to celebrate. So this is also your month also. And on behalf of all the organizations, they are on their way. Nigerians have a, we have a known thing of always coming to parties late. Literally, like if you have a party that starts at 7 o'clock, they come at 10. I told them be here on time, and they're lost, and they're still coming. But when they do come, please, please, apologies for their tardiness, but I think it's a cultural thing. I think so. But other than that, I truly appreciate this recognition because, quite honestly, this is actually the first nationwide for it to be recognized. So we're putting it on the map. Yes, we're putting it on the map, and thank you, Rich, for doing this, and everyone else for hopefully accepting this. Thank you all. And this is my cultural hat. Typically, when you're like a chief, you can wear this, meaning that you've gained a lot of... Don't worry, next time I will dress you all up. But definitely, just want to thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to us, and we'll take a photo now, and then at the end of the morning session, maybe if they're here, we'll have.
Oh, they will. They're on their way.
Mr. Chair, now I will call the vote on that resolution for Ms. Boxley. I had a motion by Supervisor Serna, a second by Kennedy. Unanimous vote.
Okay. You can stay or you can go.
Okay. So now are we going back to our consent?
We'll just, we'll vote on the other, the resolutions through the other consent items.
Correct. Is it okay if I say my notes now?
Yep, please go to consent, and I know you have notes on several items here.
Okay, so for your consent matters on your regular agenda, items two through 51. You also have a revised addendum agenda, and I'm going to read, this pertains to items one through four. So for your regular agenda, item two, you're adopting an ordinance authorizing amendments to the Sacramento County Code 3.28.030 regarding the reassessment of property damaged as a result of misfortune or calamity. You waived reading on this on December 5. For item five, there is a note on the agenda that this item will be pulled and discussed after consent matters. For item six, you're introducing an ordinance amending 2.61.012 through 2.61.450 of the Sacramento County Code relating to contract authority of county officers, waiving full reading and continuing to January 9, 2024 for adoption. For item 15, you're adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 11.32 of Title 11 of the Sacramento County Code relating to airports, airline lease agreements. You waived reading on this item on December 5. And then finally, not finally, for item 18, you are adopting an ordinance levying special taxes within County Service Area Number 13. You waived reading on this on November 7. And then for your addendum agenda, I have one note. You are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. You're adopting an ordinance amending Title 4 of the Sacramento Water Agency Code, increasing the Zone 40 water development fee. You waived reading on this on December 5. And that concludes my notes for your agenda and addendum agenda.
Okay, thank you, Flo, and thank you, I know wrestling with some of the changes in the agenda. I appreciate your flexibility. Now I'll turn to my colleagues for any comments or consent items that you'd like to remove from consent, starting with Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, a question, Madam Clerk. For item five, do we need to move the remainder of the consent without that item since it will be discussed separately?
I'll take whoever makes the motion. That'll include the addendums consent and your regular agenda consent.
Very good. Second question is, on several of these items, I just have some comments to make, but I do have one item where I think there might be some substantive discussion.
Sure, would you like me to read that into the record?
I'm asking you.
Yeah, I would like to do that.
Okay, so we'll start there with item 14.
Okay. For item 14, this is to adopt salary equity adjustments for certain unrepresented classifications.
Great, thank you. So I'd like to move this item forward, obviously, because there's a bunch of classifications out there that are due, some warranted adjustments, but I think there are a couple of positions that are more population-based relative to the constituency that they serve. And so I would ask my colleagues if there is an appetite to continue a discussion on a couple of the items relative to the Board of Supervisor's staff.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor.
Thank you. I punched in. Sorry. I punched in to join Supervisor Hume in, I think rightfully, looking for not a delay in the adjustments. We don't want to do that. But there is, I think, a lot more that needs to be discussed and analyzed, quite frankly, than what has been presented with the board materials for this item. I made that clear during my briefings with our executive leadership. And so I would certainly, assuming that it might be a motion at some point to move the item, but give strong direction to staff that we revisit this. I'm eager to do that. And I will just note too that David, yesterday during the briefing, I think I made mention of the fact that the Chief of Staff title was not necessarily made clear. It is, it is as a parenthetical. So what I would also like to do with the motion today to adopt a staff recommendation is to make, to eliminate the, I think it's called administrative assistant, and then in parenthetical, Chief of Staff, it should just be Chief of Staff. I mean, let me tell you why. Because when our chiefs, who do, all of them do a tremendous amount of good work, and it's time-intensive, and it's, you know, I think we all greatly appreciate being flanked by some very smart, dedicated public servants in our chiefs. But when the time comes for them to perhaps do something else, they want to be able to cite accurately what their professional title was. So I think it's high time that we eliminate the term Chief of Staff as a parenthetical and make it very clear that is their title. So that would be something that I would ask my colleagues to support in terms of a motion to accept the staff recommendation and as Supervisor Hume has put on the table to revisit this in more detail with some additional benefit of further analysis.
Supervisor Hume, anything else?
Well, first of all, I agree with what my colleague mentioned relative to the title. I believe that change has been made. It just was not reflected in the survey because they were looking backwards to June, and so therefore it wasn't updated. So I support the rationale and the reasoning and the purpose, absolutely. And I would just like to say that, you know, when I was looking through this, again, I think we need to find a methodology that's more reflective of the work being performed by these individuals, that they don't necessarily fit into the one-size-fits-all for all of the classifications that are also being adjusted.
And thank you. I very much appreciate the comments from my colleagues. Couldn't agree more on everything you said on all points. I think, you know, we spoke about this as well during my briefing yesterday, and the more I look at the chart, and I understand when we do these comparisons with other staffers, it makes more sense. It's a lot of times more of an apples-to-apples comparison. I think with some of our support staff to the Board, it's not always apples-to-apples. And, you know, I think to myself, some of these larger counties, you have supervisors that may have 10 staff members serving a population that's similar to the population that we each serve in our respective districts. And so what that says to me is, we have support staff that are, have a unique workload, I think, in the state of California. And we have to keep that into account. And I think it's also worth exploring maybe some similar staff positions in the state legislature. You know, Chief of Staff in the legislature or an assistant position among legislative staff. It's at least worth, I think, looking at that when this comes back. I agree with Supervisor Serna that we don't want to delay the, you know, the salary adjustments that are on the table today, but certainly we need to, I think, do, take a much closer look at this, so would support that. And should we just hold that and we'll take it with the rest, or would you like us to vote on this now?
I can do a separate motion on this.
Okay, let's do that now. I think it'd be important to really, and that adds a little more emphasis to it. So we have first, oh, did you have a comment?
Just one quick comment. Supervisor Serna, I agree with you that the Chief of Staff is not properly reflected in the report. But just as a reminder, October 24, I believe it was, we did bring forward. So as far as the classification is concerned, inside the county, it is called the Chief of Staff, but we will absolutely look at it a little deeper.
Great, thank you.
Okay, then please vote. Item 14.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. And then the rest of my items are simply comments. Do you want them read into the... Okay, then I'll just say for items number seven and eight, that is the continuation of the Declaration of Local Emergency, or renewal, rather, I just want to express my appreciation for OES staff. Been in very frequent contact with them, still kind of digging out of the flood from South County, and they've just been doing a great job of being responsive and respectful to folks that are still trying to make their lives whole again. Then on item number 11, this was the, it's changing it to a termination of convenience. This was the item where we were going to terminate for cause for an alarm situation. I just appreciate staff working with the vendor to come to a situation that still allows us to make sure that we're made whole, but allows them to keep their reputation intact. And so I do appreciate the work that was done there. And then items number 31 and 42, these are two completely different items. One having to do with probation and the other one having to do with children's receiving home. But I just want to, again, say my congratulations and my appreciation for our staff and continuing to work through how do we best serve certainly our foster youth, but also the youth that are justice-involved, and try and really make sure that we're wrapping services and a supportive environment around these young people. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Hume? No other supervisors in the queue. Do we have any public comment on the remaining consent items?
Let me just double check. Right now, we only have comments for item five, which will hold until you guys discuss that item.
Okay, so entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
So moved?
Second.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect, there are separate votes for items five and, excuse me, for items 14. We're holding item five, and then for your addendum four.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go to item five.
Item five is the deferral of implementation of the changes made to Welfare and Institutions Code 5008 by Senate Bill 43 until January 1, 2026.
Good morning, Siobhan.
Good morning. I'm Siobhan Katari, Deputy County Executive over the Social Services Agency. And I'm presenting this item this morning because it impacts, crosses over multiple departments under both the Social Services Agency as well as the Public Safety and Justice Agency. DCE Jones and our other department heads are here should there be any specific questions for them to answer on details associated with the law or program implementation. Today, we're asking the Board to consider approval to defer implementation of SB 43 for up to two years until January 2026. The resolution attached to your packet has been created by the County Council Association in collaboration with CSAC, the California Association of Counties, as a template for counties to use. And of note, 56 of the 58 counties either have approved the deferral, their boards have approved the deferral, or they're in the process of approving them, their onboard agendas. There are two counties that are choosing not to ask for the deferral at this time, and that's San Francisco County and San Luis Obispo County. As background, SB 43 was passed by the California Legislature and signed by the governor on October 10 of 2023. This new legislation makes several significant changes to the state's involuntary detention and conservatorship laws under the LPS Act, all of which are outlined in your board letter. I would like to lift up the most significant of these changes. SB 43 expands the state's definition of gravely disabled criteria to allow for the involuntary detention and conservatorship of individuals on the basis of a standalone severe substance use disorder or co-occurring mental health and severe substance use disorder. It expands the definition of grave disability to include individuals who are unable to provide for their basic personal need for personal safety or necessary medical care. It defines necessary medical care to mean that a licensed healthcare practitioner determines to be necessary to prevent serious deterioration of an existing medical condition, which is likely to result in serious bodily injury if left untreated. It modifies hearsay evidentiary standards for conservatorship hearings to make the threshold easier for a conservatorship to be approved. And it requires counties to consider less restrictive alternatives such as assisted outpatient treatment or care court prior to, during their conservatorship investigations. SB 43 also expands reporting requirements for counties to align with this new criteria. We recognize the importance of this law, which focuses on serving those we have had challenges engaging involuntary treatment and housing supports. And as such, we intend to act with urgency to implement. That being said, the legislature has given counties the authority to defer some parts of the implementation for up to two years, acknowledging that there are still some significant aspects of the law that require much work to be done by counties and our partners to implement effectively, ensuring we are both protecting the safety and the rights of those we serve. we serve. We have been waiting for the state to issue guidance, however, just learned that they do not intend to. And as a result, counties and our partners will need to develop an extensive array of new policies, procedures, workforce, residential placements, and treatment capacity to implement SB 43, which is detailed in part in your board letter. Our Behavioral Health and Public Conservator-Guardianship Associations, along with counties in the region and state, will work together in the upcoming months to collectively ensure a safe, effective, and consistent implementation of the law. This is extremely important due to the regional and even statewide resources, such as treatment facilities and emergency rooms that are shared to serve this population. If the Board passes the resolution to defer today, it will give us the option to delay the implementation of the expansion of grave disability to include substance use disorders until we lay the groundwork for doing it responsibly. There are other parts of the law that would still go into effect on January 1, 2024, and this includes the new hearsay evidentiary standards, the requirement to explore whether AOT or care court are more suitable alternatives prior to conservatorship, and the new quarterly reporting requirement starting May 2024. Some of the departments or entities that will be impacted by this will need time to prepare and ramp up, and these will include our Behavioral Health Division under our Health Services Department, our Public Conservator-Guardians Office under DCFAST, our Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services, our Public Defender's Office, County Council, the courts, emergency departments and hospital partners, psychiatric facilities, and our treatment providers, and our first responders, including peace officers, fire, and EMS. We're happy to come back to the Board at regular intervals to report on our progress surrounding implementation. Once again, I want to stress that we will act with urgency to implement as soon as possible, understanding the complexities and the need to balance speed with responsible implementation. I have several team members from the various departments here today, and we are happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Siobhan, and I appreciate you calling out some of the things we will be doing in the interim. And what is the date that we have to implement care court in Sacramento County again?
It's December of 2024.
Okay, so, and obviously, some of those efforts to implement care court, and as we are refining some of the processes related to AOT, it's going to, that will help us be prepared for implementation of this with the delays, is that correct?
Absolutely. I mean, the tools are different in terms of the population and scope, but we are building teams and building systems that will effectively be able to address these. There's several things, obviously, that don't exist currently in Sacramento County or anywhere in the state, such as, an example, being a locked substance use treatment disorder facility that we have to be able to ramp up so that we have the necessary tools in our toolbox to do it responsibly.
Okay. And appreciate you providing a presentation today. I know that initially was not expected, but I think it was important considering the public comment we had. And so, no supervisors queued up right now, so I will turn to public comment first and then bring it back to the Board after that. Do we have some public commenters? Madam Clerk?
We do. The first one is Patricia.
And if you're in chambers, you can go submit your name to the clerk if you have a public comment.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing my comments, and thank you for your service. My name is Patricia Wensel. I am a longtime resident of District 2. Among other positions, I am a consumer representative to the Mental Health Board and work for the National Alliance of Mental Illness, NAMI Sacramento, as the helpline coordinator. We speak with more than 120 people a month about relocal resources and navigating the mental health system. 60% of our callers are family members looking for assistance and support. My opinions are informed by these roles, but I am here as a mental health advocate and not as a representative of either of those organizations today. I am here to advocate against the delay in implementation of Senate Bill 43 that changes the criteria for eligibility for grave disability under the Lantern and Petrus Short Act. The bill expands the definition of grave disability, as you have heard. This expansion will allow medical facilities to treat people with serious medical conditions who refuse treatment because their mental health symptoms limit their ability to accurately perceive the intentions of medical staff and the possible consequences of refusal of treatment. For example, a mother of an adult child who was experiencing manic symptoms took her adult child to the emergency room when these symptoms first appeared. It was determined that this individual was suffering from a thyroid disorder, which was causing their manic symptoms. It would also cause organ damage if left untreated. This individual, who was experiencing paranoia, refused treatment for this highly treatable medical condition. The hospital released this individual without treating them because they did not yet meet criteria for grave disability, which does not currently include the ability to agree to necessary medical care. If SB 43 were in place, this individual might have been held and treated with a good chance of recovery. County concerns that emergency rooms will be flooded with people 51/50ed under these provisions. It is nearly impossible to get people with severe mental illness 51/50ed for grave disability by law enforcement now. Expecting this to change because SB 43 is implemented seems unrealistic. I urge you to implement SB 43 in January 2024 and not delay it by two years. Alternatives include a delay of six months to allow staff to address some of the issues they have identified.
Ms. Patricia, can you wrap up your comments, please?
Individuals with severe mental illness who need life-changing medical care and are unable to agree to treatment through no fault of their own are counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
Lori?
I think Lori and Rachel were for the Sheila Boxley item.
Leslie?
Happy holidays. My name is Leslie Napper. I am a person that lives with serious mental illness. I am also here on behalf of Disability Rights California. Deferred implementation is necessary regarding SB 43. The county needs time to prepare for the forthcoming implementation challenges caused by SB 43, which will greatly increase the number of people being treated in the county's already overburdened emergency rooms, hospitals, and behavioral health systems. In addition, the county should prioritize efforts to reduce unnecessary institutionalization, including through conducting a data-informed assessment of the county's behavioral health care needs and resources, and investing in community-based behavioral health services to meet the needs of the community. SB 43 will only exacerbate current systemic problems or issues. The county should defer implementation in order to prepare its behavioral health systems to meet the challenges posed by SB 43. The county should also defer the implementation in order to build out a culturally responsive, community-based behavioral health services that prevent involuntary hospitalization and help behavioral health clients thrive. Consistent with the state auditor's findings, the county should invest in community-based, community-defined, evidence-based housing and services, including affordable, accessible housing, and assertive community treatment, ACT. Investment in the community-based housing and ACT services is a way to successfully address the root cause that caused SB 43 to be enacted. In conclusion, we urge you to adopt the resolution formally deferring implementation of SB 43 until January 1 of 2026, as authorized by law. We further urge you to use the time, to use this time afforded by the implementation delay, to invest in culturally responsive, community-based behavioral health services, including housing and ACT services, in order to meet the needs of our community. Thank you so much for listening. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Wade?
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Wade Brennelson. My wife and I are co-chairs of the Family Advocates for Individuals with Serious Mental Illness in Sacramento County. We understand that you may delay the implementation of SB 43 until January 2026, as Siobhan has discussed. However, our 30-plus years of work in the California Department of Education and local school districts taught us how newly passed education legislation in the spring could be implemented in the fall. This takes hard, thoughtful work by groups of responsible people, often working overtime. Also, we know that this legislation is critical to address the needs of individuals with serious mental illness and substance use disorder as others, as outlined in our letter to you and others that you received. Therefore, first, we recommend that you receive a work plan with specific goals and implementation dates to be submitted immediately. Second, we recommend that you receive updates every quarter regarding the progress that has been made. These recommendations should result in the earliest possible implementation. Without this focus, we are concerned that the two years of delay requested may not result in a January 1, 2021 start date. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Diana?
Hello, my name is Diana Burdick, and I want to say, change is hard, especially if you do not initiate the change. Behavioral health has a history of being resistant to change, as evidenced by their resistance to implementing AOT. While other counties accepted this program, Sacramento County did not. I see the same steps being played out with SB 43. For those of you who have a loved one living on the streets, suffering from SMI, SUD, SB 43 is a possible lifeline. My son is delusional and not on any county assistance program or accepting services, except when he's incarcerated. I don't believe he has two years in him to wait for assistance. I know I do not have the strength to continue to witness, sorry, my son dying on the streets of Rancho Cudahoga. So I ask you, what would you do to save your loved one? Please do not delay implementing SB 43.
Thank you, Diana.
Elizabeth?
Thank you, and thank you for taking this off the consent agenda. It's very important to be able to give public comment and to hear from all sides. And while I stand here to ask that a delay is not granted, and a consideration of a quickened timeframe is considered, and we heard from Siobhan Katari, and even though the report is that counties are delaying, what she didn't mention is Los Angeles County, San Diego County, Alameda is voting today with pressure to shorten the timeline. It doesn't, to say that we're going to wait till 2026, all that does, that extends the time period where the only option for substance use treatment and co-occurring with SMI is the jail. So it's criminalization for another two years. And my other problem is that, and I thank Cal Voices for pointing out the legal points, that the original LPS did include severe alcoholism. So the intent was to be able to deliver treatment during that time period, and yet this is decades later. So I'm not understanding why there hasn't been a framework already, why this has to be invented now, when the original intent of LPS in 1967 was to create an avenue for some kind of substance use. So in theory, we're already decades behind legally. We've been breaking the law all these years. So, and the other thing is, this Board has dedicated this next year to meth awareness. We have Saber Sacramento website. This Board has done amazing things to take strong leadership, to get people out of their silos, to work together, and those awarenesses are wonderful. But I've lived with a person who has these co-occurring issues and becomes a point at which involuntary treatment is the life-saving treatment. You've supported assertive community treatment services, you've funded it, you've done all you can. The missing piece is the involuntary care, and that's what this can help with, with the correct, and keeping civil rights constraints in place. Please don't delay it for two years. Consider shortening.
Claire?
My name's Claire Courtwright. We wrote the Board a letter on behalf of Cal Voices urging a delay in implementation of SB 43. You know, the wisdom of the law as policy is what it is. Implementation is a different question entirely, and we wholeheartedly concur with the recommendations of CBHDA, CSAC, and the County Executive, that this is not an implementable law at this time, is simply not safe to open Pandora's box here, and I will go over some of the reasons very briefly. I will also mention I'm a former patient rights advocate in Sacramento County. I've represented people in the LPS system. Also, for Santa Clara County, I implemented the last two major changes to the LPS Act for the Patient Rights Office there, so I'm familiar with the implementation problems here. But obviously, the biggest problem is we simply don't have the facilities for SUD treatment, and y'all don't have an option to let some of the law go into effect and not other parts of it. They just didn't give you a soft open. So, you know, the physical facilities don't exist, but equally important, they don't exist in regulation, right? We don't have on the books what it means to be an involuntary SUD treatment facility. What treatment will people get? How will it be safe? What are the credentials of the provider? When will they be released? None of that is there. The county doesn't have legally the facility it needs, which are LPS-designated facilities, to do this. We're also picking up folks who have complex co-occurring medical conditions. We have no appropriate treatment facilities for those folks. Only place these people can go, if you allow the law to take effect, is to your ERs. None of them are LPS-designated. They legally can't hold the folks. I mean, you're in a bind here. And, you know, I think that's some of what the County Exec really pointed out, but I also want to say it's not an academic question, right? If you allow the law to take effect, it's within the discretion of a hold writer to place the hold. Someone will. And then you've got someone, you know, sitting in the back of a police cruiser who's acutely intoxicated on you don't know what, and something has to happen next. And that something needs to be safe, right? If we are taking people into a form of protective custody, we need to make sure that we can actually protect them in that custody. We can't do that without a proper implementation. 56 counties aren't wrong here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board. Ryan Loofborough with Sutter Health. I'm Director of Local Government Affairs, and I just want to thank Claire for the segue into the conversation about emergency departments. I actually was downtown today for the California Hospital Association Conference, and Senator Egman was speaking about 30 minutes ago. So there's no question about the spirit of this law, and certainly, we feel the inertia moving in the right direction, providing real care for people with substance use disorder and mental health disorder. We see it every day in our emergency department, but implementation without having the infrastructure in place will only result in the outcome of longer waits in your emergency departments, a decrease in access in healthcare at that point in the ecosystem. So we support staff's recommendation for a delay, and we're excited to work with our partners at the county and our other agencies within Sacramento to really deliver on this law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Debbie?
Debbie?
I just wanted to give you my heartfelt concern with all of this difficulty we have with people not taking care of themselves and then struggling to, how can we assist them? Just wanted to not come as a devil's advocate, but as a, just adding another piece to the In the case of the Constitution, we're guaranteed life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. In the California Constitution, we're guaranteed rights over our property. Our first property that we're given is our body. Now, if someone's not taking care of their body, isn't that their choice? What concerns me the most about the verbiage in this document is the word hearsay, that we can institute a procedure or to pick someone up based on hearsay. Can't we tighten that up so that it's got some, like a warrant, and we actually have, like, two witnesses that there's a problem? But I just wanted to say, the Seventh Amendment is being discussed in oral arguments at the Supreme Court currently, and it says, "In suits at common law, where the value in controversy shall exceed $20, but with inflation, the right of trial by jury shall be preserved, and no fact tried by a jury shall be otherwise reexamined by any court of the United States than according to the rules of the common law." Everyone has a right to their own property. So again, I'm just adding a piece for your discussion and your consideration, and God bless us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Mary?
Thank you for taking this matter off the consent calendar. My name is Mary Ann Bernard. I live here in Sacramento. I am a member of Sacramento Faze Me, meaning I have an SMI, severely mentally ill loved one, and I am also a retired lawyer who used to represent mental hospitals in another state with far superior laws. Our laws here just got a lot better because of SB 43, and many counties are doing delays, but only for a year. Slow and SF are implementing immediately, but make no mistake, the resolution that was put before you delays for fully two years, no reporting requirements. Now, we have more homeless here than any other county, according to recent statistics, and many, perhaps most, are either SMI or SUD or both, and many have terrible medical problems, especially the duly diagnosed, which they deny because they are insane. Pat Wenzel has given you many examples. But your behavioral health department, and many others, have, as a group, been very happy to push their hardest problems off on the streets, the jails, and the morgues, and they would be happy to continue to do that, but finally, state law does not allow them to do that. You need to monitor them to make sure that they are doing their jobs. Delay is not in the county's best interest. You've got your May's decree problems, you've got your homeless problems. This will help, but it has to be implemented. An option I see, and subject to what your own counsel says, since this resolution that they've given you, the only support in it, in your whereas clauses, is delay as to SUDs, SUDs. Fine, delay only as to SUDs. That's the only thing you have support for. Implement as to SMIs and people who, there are probable cause that they're SMI now, and you will save lives, and you will reduce homelessness, and you may have a chance of implementing the May's decree. In any event, all of our membership agrees you need to monitor behavioral health, to make sure they are doing something, because what you're getting here is passive resistance that has gone on for years, and it is literally killing people.
Thank you, Mary.
I have one more comment.
Please wrap it up.
Yeah, I got 40 seconds. You're actually over your time. Oh, I'm negative. Oh, never mind. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. That concludes public comment?
That concludes your public comments.
Okay, thank you for everyone who commented. I'll bring it back to the board now. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I just want to appreciate elevating this item up to discussion, one to give the public the opportunity to weigh in specifically on this, but also because I think it is a sort of a balancing act that we're being asked to perform here. And number one, I support SB 43 wholeheartedly. I think LPS has been inadequately written and implemented for decades now, and is a hindrance to really, one, getting our arms around the homeless situation, but also getting people connected to the help that they may or may not know that they even need or want. And so I fully support the law, I fully support its implementation. However, as was mentioned by some folks, including staff, and I'm taking staff at their face value, but I'm also taking those that have been in the trenches doing the work, that implementation, as was mentioned, is different than the law. And we literally do not have the infrastructure, both from a facility standpoint or from a personnel standpoint, to do this in the appropriate manner. And why that's important is I have really been leaning in recently to offload times as it relates to our emergency rooms. Right now, I think if we were to implement this law overnight, we have two options, jail and the ER. And neither one is necessarily going to help the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish here, which is to recognize that back when, and I don't remember who mentioned it, but whoever, I think it was Elizabeth, that said that the law currently only addresses chronic alcoholism. When this law was passed back in the late 60s, early 70s, they had no idea what fentanyl was. They had no idea that meth was going to be made by petrochemicals and brought across the border by the metric ton and caused psychosis upon the first use, right? I mean, this is, we are dealing with a situation we did not anticipate when this law was written. However, as we look to implementation, I think we have to make sure that we've stood up the facilities and the appropriate personnel to make sure that we are doing this in a way that is helpful for the individual, and that we are not just overloading our emergency rooms, because, you know, as I've been leaning in on the offload times, this would exacerbate that situation. So we're taking an already broken system, or we're breaking it further. However, I absolutely hear that what the law allows for is to delay up to two years. So I would like to offer a sort of split-the-baby compromise, if we will, and that is to say that we do a one-year delay, and we have the option then, if we still can't figure it out by that point, to delay for another year. But I think we absolutely need to keep the sense of urgency, and I trust staff when they say that they hear that and they want to do that. But as was mentioned, without those check-in points, without those milestones, I would definitely like to make sure that we are kept in the loop and on this. That would be my suggestion, is that we do a one-year delay to allow us time to stand up the appropriate facilities, hire the appropriate staff, but that we look at really trying to put our feet to the fire to make sure that we're implementing the spirit of this law as expediently as possible, because it is critically important, in my estimation.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot to say at this point, because Supervisor Hume has the superpower of being able to read my handwriting, apparently. Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly with what you said, and...
Mark the calendar, please, for the first time.
It's the season. You know, I agree, I was going to ask, you know, is there an opportunity, because I too, 100% support this. I've been saying for years that we, as a society, not just Sacramento County, but as a society, need to come to grips and have these hard conversations, that there are people, whether we, you know, want to admit it or talk about it, who are on the street we see every day, who simply will not be able to take care of themselves due to substance use disorder or mental illness. It's an unfortunate fact, so we have to come, so that's why I do support this. I also know that, you know, having worked in the trenches to a certain degree for the last 10 years on this issue, not this bill, but on mental health and SUD, these are very complex, very difficult programs to stand up. And all due respect, as a former school board member and someone who's worked in the K-12 and Department of Education and UC developing K-12 programs, this is not the same. So that short period of time, I just don't see it as possible, for the reasons that Supervisor Hume outlined that I won't go over again. The other thing is, is that, you know, I hear the concern for due process. As a recovering attorney, I'm always concerned about such things. If we rush this, rush implementation, I'm afraid due process will fall away. We don't have the process in place to do it. So for all of those reasons, and for those better spoken by my colleague, I completely agree. The other thing I'd like to do is, if I could add a caveat to the recommendation from Mr. Hume, is that we also have a report back on the progress every six months.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Frost?
Thank you. I have concerns regarding SB 43. First of all, we lack the current resources in our emergency rooms at the present. We have issues with wall times, and our first responders have the, this situation where they'll be in the emergency room for hours with a patient that they cannot hand off to the hospital. So we don't, we already have a problem with the existing people that are there for services. And the state, Siobhan mentioned the state is not giving guidance, so I'm concerned when every single county of 58 counties is going to then decide where to draw the line on what's serious, seriously disabled, and if those are different, how does that work? It won't be consistent throughout our state. And I'm concerned that this is an unfunded mandate, and so we have to figure out how we're going to pay for it, and this is a huge lift. I think people don't realize, but this is like, gonna require cross, it's going to reach across many departments, and there's going to be a whole lot of collaborative work that goes into making a successful continuum, and without funding, how are we going to pay for it? And finally, you know, I think it is really important, I can't remember who mentioned it, several people mentioned, that it's really important to have the right resources in place so that once we get them into those services, that we're successful in crossing them over to sobriety or whatever, you know, health or medications, whatever their issue is. And it's complex. It's not a so simple, they have been drinking, so you stop drinking. You know, it's way more complex than that. If they've been taking meth or heroin or fentanyl, they may have, you know, drug-induced psychosis that will take time, sometimes years and sometimes never to get over. And so it's, I don't think it's, this is as easy as one might think, and I think we should give, extend it for two years with the idea that we want to, you know, put something together as quickly as possible, but to give, and to report back in a timely manner, but to give our staff and our first responders and everyone involved and engaged in this the time to put the systems in place. And then lastly, I want to say, where do you draw the line? That is a concern for me. Is it illegal to be homeless? No. Is it illegal to kill yourself with alcohol or drugs? I don't think so. Is there a victim and who, you know, or does someone have the right to their own bodily autonomy? I think we need to understand, when is it that someone becomes a danger to themself or someone else? That's what we've been working with up till now. Now we're changing the conversation, and we're saying someone can't be a danger to themself. And so I have questions regarding that as well. So I'm hoping we can, you know, give our staff, you know, extend this for two years to give enough time, report back with the good intentions as soon as possible, to get something in place that's going to help as many people as possible as soon as possible, but to make sure that we're protecting people's rights and at the same time have the systems in place to deliver adequate medical and mental health services. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Chair. So I don't have too much more to add to what's already been said. I think the easiest way to understand the choice before this board today is, do we want to implement immediately or as soon as possible at the cost of, in my opinion, introducing chaos into what has already been acknowledged as a very complex, complicated legal proposal? I'm certainly very supportive of the statute, but, you know, similar to other complicated matters that have been handed to counties in the state of California that are, you know, have a lot of moving parts, we need to do it right. That's the other choice. And so I really fall in the sight of looking at how we can make this implementable to a point that it satisfies the intent of the law. It needs to be a refined new tool in our toolbox to help those that need the help, that need help with their substance use disorder and their mental health needs. But I do not want to be party to simply implementing it overnight to say that we've implemented it, and then for all the rarest reasons that have already been cited, whether it be the ER, or the fact that this county may be hit with a wave of constitutional violations, I would rather avoid all that. I would much rather us do it right. And so that is the choice that I think makes the most sense. What I would add, though, to the suggestions that have been made by Supervisors Hume and Kennedy, is that we, you know, a year, two years, those are all arbitrary dates, quite frankly. But what I would like to see us acknowledge is that we make sure that we backend it so that's no longer than two years to implement. I think if I understood the suggestion by my colleague, Mr. Hume, we would shoot for a year to figure out how to best implement the law. But if we can't, then of course we have to extend that time, but I think we need to have a backstop on that. So I would add that as well. And in terms of the notification of this board and to the public about the progress that is being made, should we choose to delay implementation, I think we need some lead time, some heads up, you know, well in advance before we are agendizing anything in terms of at a time or not. So I don't know if that could be accomplished pursuant to what Supervisor Kennedy has suggested in terms of a six-month update, but I think that makes a lot of sense to make sure that we're not surprised, that the public's not surprised, that consumers aren't surprised, that family members aren't surprised, but that, those are my suggestions and my feelings on the decision in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Before we get to a motion to consider, I also want to just thank everybody who came here today. I mean, this is an incredibly difficult, incredibly personal issue for so many of you, so thank you for being here, folks on both sides of this issue. I think you're seeing a pretty broad consensus among the board here for support for SB 43 and its underlying principles, that we need better tools to get people the help that they need, but we obviously want to make it, make sure it's done appropriately. And I'm hearing just kind of two components that, and then I'll turn to Supervisor Hume to make a motion. One, to shorten the timeframe to a year, and if that can't be done, two years at the absolute maximum, but then incorporating also a report back period. So Supervisor Hume, I'll turn back to you to make a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to just clarify the motion, because I've heard the comments from the DIA's, and I think they are all very well made, in that this is a very intractable, delicate situation, that the implications of the unintended consequences are almost as dire as what we're trying, the cure could be worse than the symptoms. And so what I've heard and what I'd like to put out there as a motion is for a one-year extension with report back at the six-month and nine-month mark, so we can check progress, with the opportunity of a one-year option to take us out to the allowable two years if need be. And if we exercise that option, I would assume we'd have appropriate checkbacks during that timeframe as well.
And County Counsel, can we incorporate that into this?
Yes, I was just going to note that we'll have to amend the resolution, and so I'm just going to read, or I guess not read, because it's not there, but state what I think the resolution will say, just the last page, where it says, "Now therefore be it resolved at the Board of Supervisors on behalf of the County of Sacramento, a political sub... political subdivision of the State of California pursuant to Welfare and Institution Code Section 5008, Subdivision H4, as enacted by SB 43. Hereby elects to defer implementation of the changes made by that bill to Welfare and Institutions Code Section 5008 until January 1st, 2025, unless further extended by the Board. Staff, now, before, now therefore be it further resolved that staff will return to this Board with updates on SB 43 implementation at the six-month and nine-month mark, or words to that effect, in the year 2025."
And Supervisor Serna, comment?
I would like to suggest that when you, I forgot what the verbiage was, you said, in reference to extending, no later than, needs to be in there.
Right. Well, I will add that, but you, the law requires that it can't be extended past July, or January 1st, 2026, but we will add that.
Okay.
Supervisor Frost, yeah?
Point of clarification, was it the six-month and nine-month in the year 25 or 24?
Oh, I'm sorry, 24.
Twenty.
Yep. I didn't write it down, but I'm sure I would have caught it, but thank you for the reminder.
And you reading that, and I was agreeing, that's sufficient to incorporate into the motion and vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second with the language as, the changes as read by our County Counsel, please.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll take us to item 56.
Item 56 is the County Service Area Number One, Zone One Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for the Silviera subdivision.
Morning Joe.
Good morning Members of the Board. Joe Grassick with County Engineering. And we also have DOT staff available to answer any questions that may come up. So, the Silviera subdivision is located approximately 1,300 feet east of Bradshaw Road and 2,200 feet south of Gerber Road and proposes 72 single-family lots. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding of street and safety light maintenance, which is provided by County Service Area Number One for unincorporated county. As a result, the project proponent submitted an application to initiate the benefit category change process. And in response to that request, a ballot and notice were mailed to the property owners on October 20th. Currently, the project site consists of a single parcel in the safety light only benefit, benefit category and has an annual assessment of $2.56. The proposed change is to the enhanced street and safety light benefit category for residential parcels. And based on the current rates, the service charge for this fiscal year will be $59.52 per residential parcel, for a total of $4,285.44 for the subdivision. And if there are no questions from the Board, we recommend that the Board opens the public hearing, considers any written and oral public testimony, objections, and protests, and then directs the clerk to tabulate the protest ballot.
Thank you Joe. No comments from Supervisors right now, so I will do that, open the, the public hearing.
We do not have any comments.
Okay. And I'll close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, please tabulate the protest ballots.
We received one ballot from Bruce L. Speckert, 1993 Trust, Herender Joel Sarwan Joel. The parcel number is 12200200090000. Site address, 7775 Carmen Cita Avenue in Sacramento, and they are in favor.
Okay, Joe.
Great. And since there is no majority protest, I will read the fill-ins for the resolution. In Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the Board had received zero written protests. In Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the Board had received one protest ballot, totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category and 0% was in opposition.
Then I entertain a motion. Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you Joe.
Thank you.
Item 57.
Item 57 is approve the 2024 Department of Regional Parks Fee Schedule, introduce an ordinance to add Section 9.36.031 and amend Sections 9.36.050 and 9.36.063 of the Sacramento County Code related to Sacramento County Regional Parks, waive full reading and continue to January 9th for adoption.
Good morning Liz.
Good morning Board, Members of Staff. Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks, I have a PowerPoint for you. Trying to get a little fancier with our PowerPoints, make them a little more interesting. So, I am here before you to bring forward a recommendation of approval of our 2024 fee schedule. We did complete some public outreach and feedback. We posted our proposed fee schedule online for 30 days and then also presented it to the American River Parkway Advisory Committee, the Dry Creek Parkway Advisory Committee, and the Recreation and Park Commission. The Recreation and Park Commission took a vote to conceptually approve our fee schedule. There was not a quorum at either of the American River or Dry Creek Parkway Advisory Committees, but in general, the members that were present were in favor of the fee schedule. We received 28 comments to the posting online. 12 people were opposed to the fee schedule updates, eight approved, and we had eight general questions or suggestions. Table 1 of your report lists out a comparison for our day use and annual passes. We compare our prices historically to state parks, Sonoma County Parks, Yolo County, East Bay Regional Park District, Santa Clara County, Solano County, and the city of Sacramento. Our day use and annual pass fees are either at the average or below the average of all of these agencies. And it should be noted that we are not requesting any increase to our low-income annual passes. This is our current fee. And these are our proposed fees. We have additional fee changes for youth group camping, RV camping, amplified sound permits, bounce house permits, Gibson Ranch off-season use and special event permits, and open trail event permits. Current fees versus proposed fees. The next item I would like to discuss with you is our Habitat Restoration Program Fee. My animations aren't working very well. Our bird did move. And so, on the computer screen, it's a lot smoother and a lot more fun. So, I'll work on that. I'm kind of geeking out on PowerPoint presentation. So, this is a picture of a mitigation site. And if this works right, imagine what it will look like when it's done.
Well, you really built it up Liz.
I know. Really pretty, huh? All right, our Habitat Restoration Program Fee. So, the purpose of this fee, it was established in 1996 as a means to set up a funding to acquire additional parkland by charging a fee to other entities who desire to use our parkland for mitigation projects. So, the history of this fee, in 1996, we had a flat rate fee of $8,000 per acre. In 2006, they revised that flat rate fee to $20,000 per acre. In 2009, we had the fee adjusted to tie the fee to different typical mitigation types. And we hired a consultant to prepare that information for us. Also, in 2009, the Board took action to allow us to use this fee for both land acquisition as well as park operations, as long it was, as it was tied to habitat protection and enhancement. So, when the fee was prepared by our consultant in 2009, they were looking at the cost of a private mitigation bank. So, our proposal to change these fees is tied to the CPI adjustments for construction projects, because the fee presumably from the private banks is based on the construction of said habitat and also maintenance. Can't just be me, but maybe it is. Flo, if, if it's not working, is it a battery issue?
There you go.
Okay, there we, yeah, there we go. This is our current fee. There we go. And these are our proposed fees for the Habitat Restoration Program Fee. Next up will be Cherry Island. All right, I'm paying the price for trying to be fancy. Is it?
If you can't do it, just go ahead and walk us through it Liz.
Okay. I shall do so. All right, we are taking some changes, are proposing some changes to Cherry Island Sports Complex new fees. We are adding a for-profit business tournament operator fee of $45,000 per day. However, we are decreasing the tournament rental fees for league, club, team, or nonprofit from $3,000 per day to $2,700 per day. We are asking to implement a vendor fee of $150 for any vendors that are not on county contract. That would be per vendor, per tournament. We are also requesting a tournament rental deposit of $500. And actually, the feedback that we received from our advisory groups was that that fee is too low, but we're sticking with the $500 deposit. The reason why we needed to do this deposit is because we had folks that were basically taking up all of the tournament dates for Cherry Island and then canceling the events at the last minute, meaning we were losing out on all revenue. We also prepared a tournament cancellation deposit retention schedule, which you can now see on screen. And we have some miscellaneous new fees as well. That will be for the Gibson Ranch Cabin Lawn Area, $350. School-sponsored cross-country open-trail event fee of $3 per person. It should be noted that this fee is lower than a normal open-trail event fee because we wanted to have a lower fee for our school-sponsored events. Click left.
Because you have like special things in your.
Dang it, no more special things. I'm also proposing some administrative citation fees, an oversized event charge of $150 for those that are having a, an event and they say they're going to say, let's say we're going to have 100, 100 people at our event and we show up with 500 people, we're going to charge you an oversized event fee if it exceeds 20% of the permitted number of folks. Also, an administrative citation fee for non-permitted use of amplified sound or bounce But to do those administrative citation fees, we have to do some proposed ordinance changes. First one, 9.36.031, and that establishes the administrative fines, penalties, and procedures. The next one is 9.36.050, which is a failure to obtain required permit. This is related to amplified sound permit or having more than 20% people at the facility. And the final one is 9.36.063, amending this section to include the requirement of a bounce house permit. That, were there any questions?
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. And thank you Liz for the presentation despite the difficulties with your PowerPoint.
You know what, I'll, I'll work on it. It'll get better.
Lessons learned, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, speaking of simple, I have a simple question.
Yeah.
Will this fee, collection of fee adjustments, should it be approved? What kind of impact would it have on events, the scale of an aftershock or soul bloom?
So, those fees are negotiated fees for those special events, so it is not.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Serna. Any public comment on this item?
Not have any public comments.
Okay. Bring it back for our motion.
So moved.
Please vote. Thank you Liz.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, that'll take us on to our last morning item before we take photos.
Item 58, results of public opinion survey of county residents, recommended fiscal year 2024, 25 budget priorities, and recommended general fund contingency policy.
Morning Amanda.
Good morning Chair Desmond, Members of the Board. My name's Amanda Thomas. I'm the county's Chief Fiscal Officer, and I will briefly introduce this item, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dave Metz from FM3, who will go through this presentation. And then I'll return to give a brief presentation about the recommended budget priorities and contingency policy. So, I'm very happy to introduce Dave Metz from FM3 Research to present the results of the most recent Budget Priorities Survey of County Residents. As you know, the county first engaged FM3 in 2021 as we embarked upon our budget outreach and engagement process to conduct a residence survey in 2021. We then follow up, followed up last year with focus groups of county residents, and Dave is here today to present the results of the most recent Budget Priorities Survey conducted this year. So, with that, I will turn it over to Dave.
Morning Dave.
Good morning. Pleasure to be with you, Chair Desmond and Members of the Board. So, I'm Dave Metz with FM3 Research. I'm going to walk through the results of our most recent Budget Priorities Survey. Just say by way of introduction that the results of the survey show a lot more consistency than change when compared to the results from 2021. While overall residents express a lot of satisfaction with the services the county provides and their engagement with county employees, we still see a similar list of issues that they view as pressing concerns, that they'd like to see addressed, not just by county government, but by local and state government as well. Foremost among those, by far, is homelessness, followed by housing costs and public safety. There are some places where we do see some shifts in the public's spending priorities relative to where they were in 2021. But overall, as I say, the, the picture is more one of consistency than change. And I'll note that's true. We do this type of work for lots of public agencies throughout California, and the same dynamics are true in most other urban areas of the state right now. As a reminder, the methodology of our survey is the same as what we used in 2021. We drew a random sample of residential addresses within Sacramento County and then sent invitations to people at those addresses from both landline and wireless phone telephone calls, emails, text messages, and then postcards that were sent to households for whom we had no other form of contact information. Interviews were conducted by phone and online and in 10 languages that were offered to respondents to, to use in their responses. Many of the questions are repeated from the ones that we asked in 2021, although there's a few new questions that were included in this year's survey to build on those previous results. Here you'll see a brief summary of the, some of the salient demographic and socioeconomic characteristics of our survey respondents. In just about every case, they align with census data for the adult population of the county. We set quotas in the interviewing to ensure that we would have a representative sample, and if there were any places where we saw modest variations, we statistically weighted the data to account for that. It's also representative of the, roughly the same profile as we recruited for the 2021 survey. And you'll see at a number of places in the data, we call out some of the differences between various subgroups of the county's population. I also wanted to note at the beginning, because homelessness and housing issues are so urgent and salient for county residents, we had some questions that asked the respondents to tell us about their own experiences with housing insecurity. A total of 7% of our respondents indicated that they themselves had experienced a period of homelessness. Almost one quarter, 23%, said that they had a friend or family member who had. Another 11% said that both they and a family member had experienced this. We asked this question in our focus groups and in a lot of other research, and we define homelessness to include any period, when a person doesn't have a stable place to live they might be staying with. they might be staying with friends or neighbors, or in a vehicle temporarily. But what this does indicate is the degree to which it is a fairly broad segment of the county's population that has had a period of time when they didn't have a place to, a reliable place to stay, or had someone very close to them who were in those circumstances. And that was another thing we heard in the focus groups last year, was people noting that they were one bad financial break, potentially from losing their housing as well. So, some of the big picture questions about attitudes toward the county. The first question in the poll, as in most polls that we do on public policy issues, asked respondents to tell us if they think things in their area, the county in this case, are going in the right direction or off on the wrong track. This is just kind of a gut-level way to measure people's optimism or pessimism about conditions in their community, and as you'll see, the numbers statistically are identical to what we saw in 2021. About a quarter of county residents thinking things are headed in the right direction, 51% saying that things are on the wrong track. As a point of comparison, when we ask this question in San Francisco right now, it's nearly 80% that say that things are on the wrong track. When we ask it statewide in California, it's in the high 50s. So Sacramento is not drastically different from the sort of negative mood that we're seeing in a lot of different parts of the state right now. And the reasons why are the suite of issues that I mentioned before. We asked respondents to tell us what they saw as the most important problem that they would like county government to address. This was an open-ended question, so they could express this however they wanted to. We grouped and categorized their responses, as you'll see here, and homelessness was far and away the most frequently mentioned concern, with almost three in five voters volunteering it as the most pressing problem facing the county. That's up a little bit from the percent who volunteered it in 2021, but back then, it was also far and away the top concern for local residents at 53%. The other two major concerns to stand out here are crime, safety, drugs, basically public safety-related concerns, and the affordability of housing, each mentioned or volunteered by about one in five residents. Range of other concerns that folks mentioned, but not quite as pervasively as those top three. And just to give you a sense of how our respondents talked about these issues, these are a few quotations from the respondents in their own words of how they answered this question. Obviously, the numbers on the previous slide add up to well over 100%, and that's because there were a sizable number of respondents who mentioned more than one thing as the top issue they'd like to see the county addressing. But you'll see here just a lot of anxiety about the cost of living, especially as it relates to housing, and about homelessness. Now, we also followed up with another question that we asked in 2021, where rather than just asking the respondents to tell us what they saw as the most pressing problem, we offered them a list of concerns facing Sacramento County and had them rate each as either an extremely, very, somewhat, or not-too-serious problem. They're ranked here by the proportion that rated each one either extremely or very serious. Those are the top two points on that scale, represented by the dark and the medium orange bars, and you'll see it's almost identical to what we get when we ask people to volunteer their level of concern. Homelessness, cost of housing, and crime are the top three concerns, in each case, well over one-third of residents rating them an extremely serious problem, and two-thirds or more rating them at least very serious. The level of intensity of concern around homelessness and the cost of housing is what really stands out here. You have outright majorities in those dark orange bars labeling them extremely serious problems. That is really unusual. It's not unusual in California right now, we get very similar numbers statewide, but in most times, it's, you just don't have the intensity and breadth of concern that you see there. On homelessness, if you look at that tiny blue sliver on the far right-hand side, that's the 1% of county residents who said homelessness was not a problem. So that gives you a sense of how near unanimous that concern is. Now, to some extent, concern about these issues varied across geographic areas within the county, but again, there was more in common across geography than there were differences. Those top three issues of homelessness, cost of housing, and crime, we're seeing roughly equivalent levels of concern in the city of Sacramento, in unincorporated areas, and in the smaller cities within the county, each of which is about one-third of the population. One place where we see a big difference is the fifth item down on the slide, the condition of streets and roads. Much, much higher in unincorporated Sacramento County than we see it either in the city of Sacramento or in other cities. Almost two-thirds of residents of the unincorporated areas pointing to street and road conditions as a concern. So, all of that provides context for how residents think about the county's budget. We started off our questioning on this topic by reminding people what county government's responsibilities are. We saw this very vividly in last year's focus groups that, and you all probably experienced this in your conversations with constituents, that there's just a lot of folks who don't have a clear sense of what types of services are the responsibility of different levels of government. So we offered this question, this background statement to them to clarify, and then asked them to tell us how much need they perceived for additional funding for Sacramento County to provide essential services. When we asked this question in 2021, 62% saw either a great need or some need. Those numbers ticked up a little bit in the current survey to 64%, but that movement is within the survey's margin of error. So it's really, just looks very similar to where we saw it a few years ago. We use this number as a metric to, sort of a benchmark, to think about how much support there might be for the public providing additional revenues to county government, if, for example, they were to see a ballot measure in front of them. And so it does clearly indicate that the public says, yes, we need more dollars. Exactly how those dollars are provided, though, and the mechanism by which they are generated, as we'll see in a minute, gets very different responses from the public. In fact, in this year's survey, for the first time, we didn't do this in 2021, we offered respondents a list of different ways the county might raise money to fund those services, either by issuing bonds, and we explained a little bit about the mechanism of how bond financing works, through a parcel tax or through a sales tax increase. And while a slim and tentative majority rates bonds as an acceptable way of raising money, we see only about a quarter of respondents telling us they would view a parcel tax or a sales tax increase as acceptable. This question, while the previous question that just asked about perception of need may be an overly generous metric in the sense that we're not raising where the money would come from, this one is probably an overly conservative estimate, in that we are only focusing on where the money would come from. But I think the skepticism you see around tax increases obviously is reflected in votes at the ballot. We saw at the end of last year, voters rejecting a countywide sales tax increase here, with levels of support that sort of fell between these two questions. And again, that reflects what we're seeing all over California right now, with costs of living concerns as acute as they are, and general distrust in government, there's just more skepticism toward finance measures than what we have seen in previous years. So we drilled down more specifically on a list of specific areas where the county might allocate additional funding or might prioritize in its budgeting. And we did this through a two-part series of questions. We offered the respondents a list of different aspects of life in Sacramento County and asked them how important they saw each one in making the county a good place to live. We're basically testing the outcomes that residents would like to see in their community. We then asked them their degree of satisfaction or dissatisfaction with a set of services which roughly corresponded with those same outcomes, things the county does that are intended to make the community better in each of those specified ways. Because we asked about those two dimensions for each issue, we can then plot them on a graph, where we can identify the things that the public is most, prioritizes most highly, and then has the highest or lowest degrees of current satisfaction with. So I'll go through the results of these two questions, starting with the priority that residents assign to a various, variety of different community conditions that they'd like to see here in Sacramento County. We had them rate each of these as either extremely, very, somewhat, or not-too-important to making the county a good place to live. Obviously, all of these are things, everything on this list is something I think most of us would like to see in our community, so it's the intensity, the urgency of the priority that the public assigns to it, as reflected in those dark blue bars that we tend to be most attentive to. Low levels of homelessness, low levels of crime, affordable housing, all things that correspond to those top concerns we saw before are high on the list, but also fair and transparent election administration, protection for vulnerable children, and having enough good, well-paying jobs for local residents. All of these are things that at least half of residents are telling us are extremely important, and roughly nine in 10, at least, very important. The middle tier on this list are items that roughly 40% or higher rate as extremely important, and you'll see a variety of things here largely having to do with public health and safety, but also a few items related to housing, having an adequate supply of different types of housing available, not invoking housing costs, but housing supply is a priority for the public, and then well-maintained parks and recreation areas, also something that's in this kind of middle tier. And then the lower set of priorities are listed on this slide. And I would note, they're lower in relative terms, every single item on this list, the majority said was at least very important, and if you add in the light blue bars, the proportion who rated each as somewhat important is basically at least four out of five residents for each of these items, but in relative terms, retail and shopping opportunities, library buildings, preparation for climate change, care for stray and neglected animals, these are all things that they rank as somewhat less urgent. So then our second question asked the respondents to indicate their level of satisfaction with the job the county is doing in providing a variety of services that address many of those same needs. On this first slide, you'll see the items that local residents indicate they are broadly satisfied with, at least a two-to-one ratio of satisfaction to dissatisfaction for every item on this slide. That includes parks, libraries, elections, emergency preparations, access for people living with disabilities, animal control. Those gray bars you'll see in the middle are the proportion who say they don't know enough to offer an opinion, and obviously, some of these are services that most residents may not encounter on a day-to-day basis, and therefore, they don't have a lot to say about. As we move down the list here, this middle tier of services are ones that at least pluralities indicate that they are satisfied with, but for most of these items, it drops below half who are reporting satisfaction. And that includes a number of items relating to transportation, economic development, county streets and roads, which we saw were a concern, especially in the unincorporated areas. You'll note the dissatisfaction jumps up on that one. And then when we move to the lower tier of items, of course, these correspond with the things that people see are the biggest problems, overwhelming dissatisfaction with preventing homelessness, and providing affordable housing, and again, we see that for just about every public agency in California. So what we can do with this set of results is basically map them onto two axes here. The vertical axis indicates the degree of satisfaction that residents express with these services, the horizontal axis is the degree of importance they assign to each one. So that quadrant that's highlighted on the lower right-hand side are the items that residents see as highly important services, but ones where their current level of satisfaction is lower, and no surprise to see what you'll see there. It's largely items that relate to homelessness, housing costs, and a variety of behavioral health issues that we know many residents connect to current levels of homelessness. So those are the places where they're most likely to want to see additional investment.
Dave, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
On some of those, the slides, back up a couple of slides, just for, back up. The slides where you're asking the questions about level of satisfaction based on a certain issue, I mean, when you're talking about, you know, waste management, recycling, and animal care, and roads, certainly, you're asking everybody in the county about this when, what, two-thirds of them aren't affected by what the county does in that area. So how do we adjust for that or account for that when we're making our priorities?
Yeah. So we tell people in the introduction, we try to give them that distinction between where they're served by the city and where they're served by the county. Many of them will not draw that distinction firmly, but in the data, we're able to distinguish the responses of those who live in unincorporated areas from those who live in city of Sacramento or in the other individual cities. By and large, the satisfaction ratings were not drastically different across those jurisdictions.
So if you were just to pull, in other words, if you were just to pull out the unincorporated people, it would largely track with what you're seeing.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's very important, okay.
Some exceptions, like the roads, which I called out before, but by and large, the items where we see the lowest satisfaction, basically everything that is in that sort of priority quadrant there, no difference between the cities and the rest of the county.
Yeah.
Just a follow-up to that, I assume that if we so desire, we can get cross tabs on the whole thing?
Yes, absolutely, those have been provided to staff and they're available for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep. So, to put a finer point on what residents prioritize in terms of county investments, we repeated a question structure we used in last year's, or in the 2021 survey, and we actually did a version of this in the focus groups as well, where we asked the respondents to imagine they had a hypothetical $100 county budget to allocate, and asked them how they would divide up that money across six spending priorities for the county. And then you'll see here the average amounts that they dedicate toward a variety of different types of programs. And obviously, we're lumping a lot of things together here and trying to sort of capture the major buckets of issue areas that the county funds. The two areas where they want to see the most investment are reducing homelessness and public safety. Again, it corresponds with a lot of what we saw on the prior slides. I will note that, and I think the focus groups were really illustrative last year when we did this exercise, because the participants really struggled. They looked at this and said, well, these things are all important, and even if there's some that we feel are more urgent now, things like parks, which are lower on the list, we don't want to see them get worse. We feel like they're a great asset for the county and we want to keep them that way. So in those in-person exercises, people really tried to spread the money out as best they could while also recognizing that there were some items that they saw as more urgent currently, and I think that's really reflected in the average numbers that you see here. Just breaking out these responses by some demographic subgroups within the county population, you'll see here when we segment out the numbers by race and ethnicity, the results are very, very similar. White residents slightly more likely to put a higher dollar amount on homelessness and public safety than our residents of color, but the differences are very modest. When we look at it by jurisdiction, again, as I said, the priorities are pretty similar across all three, and you see that when we look at county spending, the way it's allocated in each area. Investment in homelessness gets more dollars within the city of Sacramento than it does in other areas, and then things like, for example, infrastructure, a little bit more priority in the unincorporated areas, but these are modest differences. The overall priorities are pretty consistent. And then a few others, when we look at those who have some connection to an experience of homelessness, either themselves or a loved one, not surprisingly, they put a higher priority on investing in preventing homelessness and a little bit less on public safety. But the big picture here is, across virtually every major demographic and geographic subgroup, we're seeing a recognition that the county has a variety of priorities that the public would like to continue to see invested in. A few final areas that we took a closer look at in the survey, we included a question about homelessness, just given the priority we'd seen attached to it in the previous survey and in the focus groups last year, where we asked respondents to tell us which aspect of homelessness concerned them most, the impact it's having on the county's health, safety, economy, and quality of life, or the health and safety of people who are themselves unhoused in Sacramento County. And you'll see by a 22-point margin, 59 to 37, the respondents said they are mostly concerned about its impact on health, safety, economy, and quality of life. And on the right-hand side, that cut across most major demographic groups within the county's population. Interestingly, even among those who had experienced a period of homelessness themselves or knew someone who had, they were significantly more likely to prioritize the health and safety of people who are unhoused, but even among that group, it was a slim majority who said it's that overall impact on the county that was their highest priority. In terms of steps that the county might take to address homelessness, we tested a range of approaches and asked the respondents to indicate how important they thought it was that the county pursue each one. Just given the level of consistent frustration that the public has had with this issue, it's not surprising that everything we offered them, a majority told us, was a very important step to take, but the things that really stood out at the top of the list, with outright majorities rating them extremely important, were both providing more affordable housing and providing supportive services that help people who are struggling with physical and mental health issues, substance use disorder, and finding employment. When we ask about the harmony between those two things in other research, providing housing and connecting it to supportive services, that collective approach tends to be the one the public thinks will be most effective. But everything on this list, again, we see some enthusiasm for, and again, that enthusiasm cuts across jurisdictions within the county, city of Sacramento, other cities, and the unincorporated areas. The ranking of the importance of these approaches is very similar, again, with that very clear top two. Finally, we had a few questions that focused on people's experience with delivery of services in the county, as was the case in 2021. About half our respondents said that they had interacted. As was the case in 2021, about half our respondents said that they had interacted with a county department or employee over the course of the last two years, so those numbers have held pretty stable. We asked them to tell us which department or departments they had had contact with. And you'll see here the ones that they mention most often. Again, obviously, these numbers add up to well over 100% because there are a number of respondents who had contact with multiple county departments. But you'll see waste management, the sheriff, the airport, code enforcement, and the county clerk are the ones that at least one in five of those who had contact with the county, or about one in 10 county residents overall, said they had connected with.
Let me stop there for a second. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. Go back.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. There you go. So with this one, with the other information we're going to get, cross tabs and all of that, I mean, is, does it get into more specifics? I mean, as an example, they've had contact with the airport, does that mean they took a flight? Or does it mean that they had trouble with our baggage handling, you know?
Unfortunately, we don't have that level of granularity. Just given time constraints in the survey, we didn't have room for follow-up questions of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
We did, although I will, I'll come, in a minute, Supervisor, I'll come, I'll come back to that, because there may be a place where we can glean a few things about that. We asked those who said they had had contact with the county department if they were overall satisfied or dissatisfied with their experience, and by a two-to-one margin, well over a two-to-one margin, they indicated that they were satisfied. Almost three times as many saying they were very satisfied as saying they were not at all satisfied, pretty similar numbers to what we saw in the past. For that subgroup who expressed dissatisfaction, they told us in their own words what it was that had bothered them about their interaction. A lot of it focused on customer service or not feeling that their issues were resolved effectively. And here, Supervisor, we could break out responses to this question, those who were dissatisfied by the department with which they had had some contact. And we might hear people saying specific things, like, "I was at the airport and they messed up my baggage." Wouldn't be for every respondent, but it might, there might be a few things we can tease out there. So, bottom-line conclusions coming from the survey, again, lots of consistency with what we saw in 2021, and as I've noted at a number of points during the presentation, consistency with what we're seeing in other urban areas in California, pessimism about the direction of the county, concern about homelessness, cost of housing, crime, road conditions, and government waste also present on the list of things residents are concerned about. But homelessness is by far the top concern, and housing costs and public safety second. There are a range of responses to addressing homelessness, that they are enthusiastic about the county implementing, and that is the number-one area, no matter how we measure it, where they'd like to see county funds invested. There are some challenges in finding funding mechanisms that the public is enthusiastic about supporting in our current economic context, although a bond measure to address some of the county's infrastructure needs was rated as acceptable by a larger number than some of the other things that we tested. And again, as we saw in prior-year surveys, overall broad satisfaction with the performance of county employees that residents came into contact with over the course of the last few years. So I will pause there. Happy to answer any questions from the board.
I had a question before I turn to my colleagues here. Have you ever asked a question, you know, provided a little information about some recent large initiatives that the county, that the board has approved, the county is pursuing, and see if that informs any of the responses?
We haven't done that here, but we have done it in other jurisdictions where we've seen similar dynamics, particularly on issues that relate to the same suite of concerns around homelessness, housing, and behavioral health. And what we often see is that the public will say, oh, I hadn't heard about that, it sounds like a good idea, but I'm looking around me, and I don't see a lot of evidence that it has changed things. And so that's sort of the dynamic that I think we grapple with.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I just want to say how much I appreciate that dollar bill exercise, because it forces people to go through the Orwellian experiment that all animals are equal, but some animals are more equal than others, right? And wherever you choose to spend dollars, you have to commensurately reduce your spending. But the other thing I wanted to point out that I saw in these slides is that even though 51% say the county is on the wrong track, in a later slide, seven of 10 who actually interact with the county say that they're satisfied. And so not to engage in what-about-ism, but I think that that shows that, you know, the agency as a whole is providing good service, certainly room for improvement, but good service, and that it's really the county as a geographical entity that is on the wrong track.
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So just to follow up on Supervisor Hume's question about wrong track, how much of the wrong-track question, which is, I think, in every single standard poll that there is and will be when it comes to government and governance and service delivery, how much of that is just inherent objection to government?
A portion of it is, Supervisor, but I think it is, it is much more about conditions in the community. What's driving it here, I think, is less people's evaluation of county government's performance or government's performance writ large, and much more their concerns about the cost of living homelessness, the issues that they see around them. So it's not, that question is not itself a specific evaluation of county government, it is much more about community conditions. And as you say, it's asked in virtually every survey, it is most closely correlated with the condition of the economy. When the economy is doing strong, those numbers tend to be better. When we're in a tough place with the economy, they tend to be weaker. And obviously, right now, we're in a period where macroeconomic indicators suggest the economy is actually pretty healthy, but people's experience with the cost of living is the thing that's really driving their perceptions, and obviously, those are not good right now.
Thank you. Good question. I choose to focus on the 7, 10 people, their experience with county is good. The media, of course, focuses on 51% don't like, think county government is headed in the wrong direction. Okay, no additional questions right now, so I think we turn it back over. Supervisor Kennedy?
I just have a comment, because as we do this exercise again, and I'm going to echo Supervisor Hume in that, that dollar bill, the $100 bill thing, I think that's a great exercise. We now have 1,000-plus people who have a little bit more understanding of the decisions we have to make up here. So, I mean, it's something I, keep that in mind as you go forward.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Supervisor. It is helpful, and I will say, when we did this in person last year, they really, you could see them appreciating the challenge of the work you have to do, because it was, it's not easy. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dave. It's always, it's always great to dig into the data a little bit. So in addition to receiving that presentation on the results of the budget priorities survey, we do have recommendations before you today for the budget priorities for the upcoming fiscal year '24-'25 budget. And I do have another PowerPoint that I will begin to get pulled up, yes. And then we also have a recommendation regarding a contingency policy for the general fund. So as you know, following extensive outreach and engagement, the board did adopt budget priorities for the fiscal year '22-'23 budget, and then affirmed those same priorities for the fiscal year '23-'24 budget. And we're here today to recommend priorities as we head into the next budget year. For the last two years, those priorities have guided the budget recommendations, with substantial new investments being made in the priority focus areas of homelessness, behavioral health, and roads. And as you just heard from Dave, the results of the 2023 survey are very consistent with the results of the 2021 survey, and also what we heard in the 2022 focus groups. And for that reason, we are recommending that we focus on the same new investment priority focus areas for fiscal year '24-'25, to continue to build on the significant efforts that are already being implemented. So just as a recap, I wanted to go over some of the elements of the budget outreach and engagement plan that we have been implementing since 2021. A big part of that plan includes public education and engagement in the budget process, so including public budget workshops that are conducted each year, with the most recent of those taking place just last week. We also now have the Budget in Brief, which is a high-level summary of the current year adopted budget, and that's available on the county's website. And we also have the Budget Explorer tool, which is also on our website, and it's an interactive tool that allows users to drill into the budget detail. Another element of this process is outreach with advisory boards and commissions. So in 2021, departments conducted extensive outreach with all of the county's advisory boards and commissions in order to identify themes that were used in the development of the survey questions for that first resident survey in 2021. And then, of course, departments continue to engage with these bodies in the development of their budget requests each year. As already discussed, we did the survey in 2021, followed up in 2022 with focus groups, and all, you know, although the, what we heard in the focus groups was very consistent with what we had heard in that first survey, it did give us a chance to get sort of some more qualitative information, to dig into the issues a little bit deeper, and also, I think, helped us to, you know, better refine and inform questions that we asked in this year's survey. I need to just hear about this year's survey. So as we turn to look at the recommended priorities, I think it's helpful to kind of set the context a bit of the framework that we put in place to think about these priorities. So the purpose is, of these budget priorities, is to guide the budget process, consistent with the community engagement plan. And the priority framework really applies to the use of general fund discretionary resources, and considers first, the county's compliance obligations and policy commitments, so the things that we have to do, and then optimizing the use of resources budgeted for existing programs. So this is really looking at what we're already doing, and making sure that what we're doing is effective and informed by the community priorities. And then finally, the framework looks at new or enhanced programs that are focused on the most critical and urgent needs, with county-wide and unincorporated focus areas identified, just recognizing that the county plays a different role in unincorporated areas. So looking at the recommended priorities for the fiscal year '24-'25 budget, the first priority is essentially unchanged from the prior years. It is complying with the county's legal, financial, regulatory, and policy obligations, including providing mandated services, ensuring collection of revenues, and complying with the general fund reserve policy. For the second priority, we are looking at existing services, and we do recommend revising this priority slightly to reflect that budgeted service levels for existing services will also be informed by community priorities. So the recommended priority here is optimizing the use of county resources with budgeted service levels for county programs, informed by community priorities, improving effectiveness and efficiency where possible, and limiting the extent to which reductions in dedicated revenue are backfilled with discretionary resources. And then the third priority really focuses on those newer enhanced programs, as indicated earlier. Given the consistency of survey results, we're recommending continuing to focus on the priority areas that were already identified. So these are the county-wide focus area of addressing homelessness, its impacts and contributing factors, including the cost and availability of housing, mental health services, and substance use treatment, and then the unincorporated focus area of improving the condition of roads. So in addition to approval of the budget priorities, we're also recommending approval of a general fund contingency policy. You may recall that the general fund reserve policy was approved by the board during budget hearings in September, and that policy was consistent with the best practice recommendations of the Government Finance Officers Association. In connection with that approval, Supervisor Serna asked about a policy for the general fund contingency, and whether GFOA had any recommendations, as it turns out, they do. And so GFOA does have a recommended contingency policy template. We're recommending adoption of a policy that is based on that template. That recommended policy is included in the packet as Attachment 1, and the key elements of that are defining the purpose of the pooled contingency, indicating that that size would be based on anticipated need during the budget year, and that acceptable uses of contingency really are for unplanned, unavoidable expenditures in the normal course of doing business. So responding to more extreme events like a natural disaster or recession would likely involve the use of reserves, not just contingency. And then, on the other hand, sort of new ideas for programs really would be evaluated during the budget process and wouldn't be an appropriate use of contingency.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Thank you for referencing the contingency. I continue to think it's important that we consider having that as part of our budget practice. Is there a recommendation for whether or not it should be zero-based or rollover?
So the, with the recommendation and what's stated in the policy is that for each budget year, given what we know about for that year, you know, and sort of those known unknowns, always recognizing that there are unknowns, but given what we know, that for each year, we would establish the appropriate size for that year. So in that sense, I would think of that as zero-based, you know, where we're starting from scratch and saying, what do we think we need for this current year?
Okay, that makes it clearer. I don't disagree with that. I think we need to have some ability to tailor it based on kind of what we see in the not-so-distant future during each fiscal year. But I'm glad to hear that there's some appetite for this. Thank you.
And then finally, the policy states that the authority to use contingency would be based upon board approval through an appropriation adjustment. And that does conclude my presentation. So the recommended actions are to receive the presentation, which you've done, approve the budget priorities, and approve the recommended general fund contingency policy.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. We'll go to Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment, and that's that, you know, several years ago, when this board asked staff, we had different leadership at the time, to do a better job of educating and working with and soliciting from the public on the budget, it was met with great resistance. And then we finally put our, dipped our toe in the pool, and we're getting further and further toward the deep end now, and I sincerely appreciate it. You know, this is, it's, as we know, county government and county budgets in particular, anybody except Amanda doesn't understand them. And so, I mean, it's incredibly complex, so we have people saying, you know, the public needs to be more involved, more involved, more involved. And to a degree, I totally 100% agree, and I think we're doing that now, and we're getting this quantifiable data, and the work of FM3 is always, you know, very, very good. And so I do want to commend staff in this county for taking a very complex issue, but not letting that stop us and use that as an excuse to not solicit public comment and public participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Okay, well, let's go to a public comment.
We do not have any public comments.
Okay. Then I'll bring it back to the board.
We have staff recommendations.
Okay, motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, and thank you, Amanda, and Dave, and staff for all your work on this, and I agree 100% with Supervisor Kennedy, so. Okay, well, that concludes our morning session, so we will be on recess until 2:00 p.m. I'm going to invite the folks who are here for the Nigerian-American month recognition, invite you to come down for a photograph, and invite my colleagues on the board to join the photograph if you like.
Mr. Chair, I have two comments. First of all, according to the gentleman who was here earlier, these ladies are all early. And I was impressed with your hat, sir, until they arrived.
Chairperson, one of the young ladies wants to make a comment to the board.
Okay, we will allow it. So we're still live? We'll hold off on the recess for a moment?
Before we call, yes, please.
Better late than never, huh?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Rich Desmond, Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Sue Frost, Phil Serna, Pat Hume, everybody, it's a lot of names. My name is Chinere Ibesim Adam. I stand here flanked by my fellow Nigerian-Americans. It's indeed an honor to be here today. When we saw the agenda earlier, it was so long, and we were trying to figure out where we fit in. So originally, we planned for like 11- So originally, we planned for like 11:00, and then somewhere along the line, yesterday we get a message, oh, it's going to be like about 9:45. We were like, okay, so now we're scrambling because, you know, people have to make arrangements with their work schedules and all of that. But in all in all, we just want to say, on behalf of all the Nigerian-Americans in the Sacramento region, in the Bay Area, and the greater Northern California, we want to say thank you for this great honor, recognizing December as the Nigerian-American Cultural Heritage Month. We truly appreciate it. And Nigerians, we're a vast country, we're everywhere. There's nowhere you go in the world you don't find a Nigerian. In fact, if you go anywhere and you don't see a Nigerian, you better run away. It surely means the place is not habitable, you know? Why? Because we're very resilient, we're able to absorb things positively, and we make the most out of every situation. We are a people of noble culture. We are the giant of Africa. In spite of all challenges that we have faced, we continue to try, we continue to rise as a people. Go to any of the Ivy League schools right here in the United States, you will find us there. Go to any discipline, you will find us there. Go to any career, you will find us there. And today, I find myself sitting here, and I'm listening to all the presentations. I just have to let you know, my background is in nursing, and then personally, I decided to go into taking care of people with mental health challenges. So I'm here listening to all these presentations, I'm hearing about all these available funds to take care of them and do all this stuff. I don't know, but we don't have access to those funds, and that's the truth. Now I'm speaking for the general public. The people that are actual caregivers, truly, they need real access to be able to take care of these people, because every year during election time, it comes up, mental health, homelessness, they're being taken care of. It would be nice if we could, I could bring a bunch of caregivers and come back here, and actually, you will hear from them. I think that will make a lot more realistic observation versus everything we see on paper and TV. Being one of them, I know the challenges that we face. The people that are under SSI, you are allowed to care for them with about $42.73 a day. That's not enough. I'm giving you actual numbers. And if those people don't stay thick-skinned and do what is required, a lot of them are planning to go out of business. They don't want to do it anymore. They just cannot sustain it. I'm using this opportunity as a Nigerian-American, as I stand here thanking you for honoring us as we move further, and also pleading that we look into that aspect and actually get the voice of the people to come back and talk to you one-on-one. Thank you very much, and God bless. Compliments of the season, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year in advance.
Thank you. What we will do now is we will recess till 2:00 p.m., but after we do that, we'll come and take a photo here in the well with all of you. So we are on recess.
All right. Thank you.
Meeting back to order, and ask for Madam Clerk to please call the roll to establish quorum.
Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, right to our afternoon calendar.
Okay, for your first item, 59, this is Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property for the South Sacramento Safe Routes to School Project. For property owners, Jesus A. Gomez and Evangelina Gomez, husband and wife, as joint tenants, 4531 Iowa Avenue. Eva Risto Ramirez and Angelica V. Ramirez, husband and wife, as joint tenants, 5900 Sampson Boulevard. Property 3 is Iglesia Negrito Church of Christ, a Hawaiian religious corporation under the administration of Eduardo V. Manalo, Presiding Elder of the Church, 4910 Lemon Hill Avenue. And then for property 4, I can take a motion to drop this property. This is for Miguel A. Sands, a single man, and Michelle Y. Martinez, a single woman, as joint tenants, at 5849 Vista Avenue.
Okay, Chair, I'll move to drop number 4.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good afternoon. My name is Peter Hannan. I'm the Program Manager with the Real Estate Division, and I'm here today to introduce this item, which recommends board approval for Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property Interest for the Department of Transportation's South Sacramento Safe Routes to School Project. Again, as Madam Clerk has stated, I'd like to drop Resolution Number 4. The owners of that particular property have provided the necessary signed acquisition documents which we need to go forward. The purpose of this project will expand a transit stop and install crosswalks, curb ramps, medians, sidewalks, and speedhumps at various locations near Ethel Baker Elementary School and Nicholas Elementary School and Pacific Elementary School. Of the 18 necessary acquisitions required for the project, three are the subjects of this board item. At this time, I'd like to display Attachment 3. Each of the individual properties' necessary easements are listed on, they're listed in square feet. So Public Utilities and Public Facilities easement on one property, Iglesia Negrito, and then all temporary construction easements on the other three remaining properties. The county obtained appraisals for the affected properties from an independent appraiser and presented offers to the respective property owners for the purchase of easements that I just mentioned and displayed on Attachment 3. The county's negotiations with these remaining owners have reached impasse. The county is thus unable to secure the necessary property rights for the project. Today's Resolutions of Necessity will anticipate, and anticipated and eminent domain actions will provide for possession of the required real property interest and construction of the project while the county proceeds to acquire the easements through eminent domain if necessary. We will also, in real estate, continue to negotiate with property owners. Information to support the required statutory resolutions of necessity findings are contained within the staff report included with the agenda packet, along with owner contact histories. Notices of intention to seek approval for the resolutions of necessity were mailed to the respective property owners by registered mail and standard mail at least 15 days prior to today's hearing. If you have any questions regarding the project, I or any of the project team members here present are available to address those for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Any public comment?
We don't have anyone signed up to speak, but there is someone here for the church, so I'm not sure if they're aware.
Peter, would you like to speak on this matter? Please. And just let us know which property you're here to represent and who you are.
Yes, I am Pauline Aguinaldo. I'm one of the legal assistants for the Iglesia Negrito, property number three that's listed. We're willing to work with the county or the public of transportation on this matter. Our only concern was that we noticed that the temporary construction easement will last for three years. So we just want to know, how will this affect the safety of our brethren? Will there be like equipment on there? Because it is a church, so we do have people who are like young kids who are also visiting the chapel, visitors as well, so we're just concerned about the safety. Another thing that we would like to know is, because a portion of the property will be taken, would there be anything that would be placed on there that would require the church to relocate its sign? At that corner, we do have a sign which lists that this is the Church of Christ, it lists our worship service times. So we would like to know if we would have to relocate that sign and if the county can recompensate the church if relocation is necessary. So that's just our concerns.
Thank you. Would staff like to comment on that, Melissa? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Desmond, Board Supervisors. Melissa Wright, Principal Civil Engineer with Department of Transportation. I'd like to address the speaker's comments for this. I don't know if, do we want to put this up? So this exhibit shows the, there's a blue triangle hatch there for the permanent easement that we're seeking to acquire, and the red hatch is the temporary construction easement. So with regards to the sign, the sign will not need to be relocated, it won't be impacted at all. And as far as, pardon me, as far as the three-year term, this is the standard term we get on all of our construction, temporary construction easements, based on the time that we start the process of the real estate process. So when we first reach out to the owners and the offers are made, we have to set the time for the TCEs, the Temporary Construction Easements, and we typically do three years to account for the rest of the design phase of the project, the right-of-way acquisition phase, and then through construction. The amount of time that the property will be impacted is not the full three years. I'm guessing this would be a matter of a few weeks that this would be impacted. So no impacts to access, no impacts to parking. When they are constructing this, we'll have pedestrian detours in place so that everyone can safely access the church, who's on foot or on bike. I think I addressed all the questions. If not, feel free to ask me anything else.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. And you're continuing to discuss with the property owners these issues. Continue that, okay.
Correct. This is a matter of just keeping the project on schedule.
Great. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board.
You better figure that out in the next month. Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you for the church for being here, and also for having legitimate concerns, and I hope that what we've heard today allay those concerns, and your willingness to cooperate is much appreciated. This is an essential project that our office has been working on for many years. I appreciate DOT continuing to push it forward. You know, the last thing we want to do is endanger your children while we're protecting others. So, you know, it's vitally important that we do, you know, meet your concerns, but this is potentially going to save lives of young people in this area, so I'm very excited about it. And you came to the podium. Is it, right now is a good time for a motion, or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Then I'd like to move staff recommendation.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, for item 60, we need to wait a few minutes. Do you want to take item 61?
Let's see your nominations. Yes, please.
Okay, so you are continuing to January 9th. The Cemetery Advisory Commission, Public Health Advisory Board, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee. Continuing to January 23rd, Building Board of Appeals, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, First Five Commission. Continuing to February 6th, the Children's Coalition, the County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Kasumnas, County Service Area 4C, Delta, and the Veterans Advisory Commission. Your first item is the North Highlands and Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to January 23, 2024.
Got it, thank you. Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls.
Chiefs recommend nominating Brooklyn Pruitt and continuing the remainder to February 6th, 2024.
Thank you. Sacramento County Mental Health Board. Supervisor Serna?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Keisha Harris.
Okay. And then Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to February 6, 24.
Thank you. South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Kennedy?
I'd like to nominate Tyler Canfield.
And can we continue your remainder to January 9th?
Yes, please.
Okay. Sunrise Recreation and Park District Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to January 23, 24.
And the Sullivan Cemetery District Supervisor Frost?
Continue to February 6, 24.
And that concludes your nominations. Well, that was quick.
Okay, we should have dragged that out.
We should have talked slower.
Okay, well, we'll take a recess for three minutes then, until 2:15. Okay, it's 2:15, so let's move on to item 60.
Okay, I'm going to call the roll. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
And you have a quorum. Okay, for item 60, this is the Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property for the Fair Oaks Boulevard at Kenneth Avenue Traffic Signal Project. The first property owner is Wengong Wang and Ying Han, trustees of the Wang-Han Family Trust located at 6151 Fair Oaks Boulevard, and Ismael Pantoja, an unmarried man located at 6140 Fair Oaks Boulevard. And the environmental document is exempt.
Hey, good afternoon again, Chair Desmond and Board of Supervisors. I'm here to introduce this item, which recommends board approval for two Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property Interest for the Department of Transportation Fair Oaks Boulevard at Kenneth Avenue Traffic Signal Project. The purpose of this project consists of the signalization of the existing intersection of Fair Oaks Boulevard at Kenneth Avenue in Carmichael to improve safety for all modes of travel. Project improvements in addition to the signal include curb, gutter, sidewalk, curb ramps, and street lighting. Of the three necessary acquisitions required for this project, two properties are the subjects of this board's item. Again, I'm going to display Attachment 3. So again, this is the list of properties, which displays the property interests the county is looking to acquire in square feet. So the first, Wong Wang and Ying Han, trustee of the Wang-Han Family Trust located at 6151 Fair Oaks Boulevard. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of a public utility and public facilities easement and a temporary construction easement. Ismael Pantoja located at 6140 Fair Oaks Boulevard. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire is a public roadway and public utilities easement, a public utilities and public facilities easement, and a temporary construction easement. Again, the county obtained appraisals for the affected properties from an independent appraiser and presented offers to the respective property owners for the purchase of the easement interest I've just mentioned. The county's negotiations with these remaining owners have reached impasse, and the county is thus unable to secure the easement interest on the subject properties under the current circumstances. Today's Resolutions of Necessity and anticipated eminent domain actions will provide for possession of the real property interest and construction of the project while the county proceeds to acquire the easement through eminent domain if necessary. Again, county real estate will continue to work with property owners to reach a successful conclusion. Information to support the required statutory resolution of necessity findings is contained within the staff report included with the agenda packet, along with owner contact histories. Notices of intention to seek approval for the resolutions of necessity were mailed to the respective property owners, again, by registered mail and standard mail at least 15 days before today's hearing. If you have any questions regarding the project or any of the properties in question, I or other project team members are here to answer those questions for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peter. I don't see anybody in chambers. I'm assuming no public comment.
No public comments.
It's not here. Okay, I'm supportive of this. I have a question for DOT. I mean, this is one of those funky intersections where the streets don't quite line up, à la Mission and Arden. Melissa, what, can you tell me any features that you're maybe going to incorporate into that to address that? Because it's a challenge at Mission and Arden, and I imagine it will be here as well.
Yes, so it's an offset intersection, as you described. It'll be a little bit similar to what we did on Fair Oaks in Phase 2, which was at Landis Avenue by the post office.
Yeah.
So it'll be kind of similar to that.
Okay, yeah, that's just a tricky configuration there. Okay. Well, I don't see any questions from the board members, so the Chair will move approval.
So it'll be kind of similar to that.
Okay, yeah, that's just a tricky configuration there. Okay. Well, now I don't see any questions from the board members, so the Chair will move approval.
Second.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Thank you, DOT staff, for all the work there.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that'll bring us to our county exec comments.
I just want to say thank you. This is the last meeting of this calendar year, and wish everybody here and watching really happy holiday season.
Okay, thank you. And Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you very much. So for about five years, solid waste has been going through this process of an RFP for organics. I've talked about it many times. It's still ongoing. I'm hearing rumors that they may throw them all out after all this time, and, which is pretty unusual. But also that some of the proposals that are seeming to rise to the top entail quite a bit of trucking the organic wastes out of the county to other locations. I've spoken about this too in the past, that that concerns me. If we're going to meet our climate action plan goals, then we have to be far more creative than that. We have to utilize technology that is proven, whether or not it's been around 100 years, but it is proven. And so I'm disappointed to see that we're still having this conversation. I'm more disappointed to see that instead of incorporating new technologies which are viable, I mean, I have an anaerobic digestor on my kitchen counter. You know, I just think that we have to get this thing to the finish line, or I would like a very thorough explanation of where it is and why we're still having these conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. I have a German in memory, as does Supervisor Cerna, but before I go to mine, I just wanted very quickly, I'm wearing a PIN, Votes Core PIN, I promise our registrar voters that I would wear today. It stands for Volunteer Officials Trained for Election Support. It's an initiative to help, you know, solicit volunteers who want to get involved in our elections process in Sacramento County. So I would encourage anybody who might be interested to go to the website for our voter registration and elections to learn more. So, and thank all of them and that department for their, for their work. Also, I just wanted to bring up briefly, there was a media article the other day that was very critical of our county staff, Todd Smith, our planning director. And I just want to call that out because I think that was completely inappropriate. And I want to state, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm sure my board members would agree unequivocally, Todd has my support, and it is wrong when someone is maligned for carrying out a directive from the governing body. So I just wanted to put that out there publicly. And, you know, if Todd, I don't know if Todd is listening, but please, Dave, you know, pass that along to him, our sentiments, my sentiments. Okay, with that, I will, I would like to adjourn in memory of Naomi Lorraine Howard. Naomi Lorraine Howard was born in Laws, California on May 7, 1922. Penny, as she was affectionately known, passed peacefully on October 23, 2023. Penny resided in California her whole life and settled for the most of her life in Fair Oaks, California, a community which she loved. She was first married in 1942 to Glenn Collins, who went missing in action during World War II, leaving her a widow with a toddler son, Richard. She then met and married Robert "Bob" Howard in 1948 and had four more children, Dean, Daniel, Russell, and Mary. Always on the go, Penny was an accomplished artist and writer and very active in her church and community. In Fair Oaks, she served as honorary mayor in 2006, and again in 2020 and 2021. And in those two latter terms, that's when I got to meet her and encouraged her to take on some of the duties of delivering municipal services in Fair Oaks, but that didn't quite work out. She loved adventure, whitewater rafting, and hot air balloon rides into her 70s, climbed Mammoth Rock at age 80, and hiked, camped, and fished into her 90s. Penny is survived by her children, Dean, Russell, Mary, daughter-in-law Linda Collins, and a host of grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Penny's death is an extraordinary loss to her family and the community, especially the community of Fair Oaks. Our hearts go out to her friends and family as they grieve this loss, and I would like to adjourn in memory of Penny Howard. Supervisor Cerna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have an adjournment today in memory of the late Phil Eisenberg. And I don't have a, I don't have a script, as we sometimes use for these germans. I just didn't feel it was appropriate, for some reason, for someone that was so close to me personally, and I know others on this board also enjoyed a very close relationship, personal and professional with, with Phil. Phil passed away on October 26 of this year at age 84. It was unexpected. Many know that Phil Eisenberg served as the city of Sacramento's mayor from 1975 to 1982. He went on to serve in the State Assembly from 1982 to 1996, where he enjoyed various leadership positions on numerous important committee assignments. He was also Assistant Speaker pro temp for, for a while. He also had a passion, similar to my late father, for teaching, and he did so in his capacity as a legislator and a lawyer at Sac State, at Cal State University of Sacramento, at UC Berkeley, and at McGeorge School of Law. He also was, as many know, very focused on marine protection, and also very, more specifically, the protection of Mono Lake. He loved to go birding with his wife Marilyn. He was an art lover and art collector. He served on, as Chair of the Board for the Verge Center for the Arts. He also served, I believe, I believe as Vice President of the Board for WEVE. So he certainly gave of his time and energy and treasure to important nonprofit community organizations as well. I had the good fortune of knowing Phil since my earliest memories. He was very close to my parents. In fact, he and Marilyn, his wife, served as the executors of my parents' will and trust, and I loved him dearly. My fondest memory of Phil is he took me on my very, very first outing to go fishing, and we took his little 14-foot aluminum skiff out to the port of Sacramento, and I caught my first fish. Unfortunately, it was a shad, and I insisted that I had to eat it. And if you know anything about shad, it is the world's most bony fish. But I do have that memory and so many other fond ones that will stay with me for the rest of my life. Of course, our support and love go out to Marilyn, his, his wife, as well as the rest of his family. And I think it's appropriate that this board, you know, adjourn in his memory, and I would invite, at this point, my colleague Supervisor Kennedy, share his thoughts, as I know that he also enjoyed a close relationship with Phil Eisenberg.
Thank you, Supervisor Cerna. It's funny, because you told me you were going to do this, and first thing that I thought was teacher, so I'm glad you mentioned that. Because Phil was like the consummate teacher. Not just in the classroom, but anytime you had a conversation with him, I would be highly surprised if you didn't leave smarter than when you've started that conversation. I'd like to share just a couple of brief anecdotes. I remember when he was mayor, Phil, again, teaching me and so many others, when there was a controversial subject before the council, you know, both sides very, very angry, and this is a fairly well-documented story. You know, after they voted, after the council voted, both sides got up yelling and screaming and angry and left the room. Phil's only comment was, well, we must have done something right. We pissed everybody off. And that's actually, there's something to be learned there, as far as compromise, and you know, life is not black and white. You're neither 100% with me or 100% for me. And then another one, when I remember I was walking precincts back in 1992, my first run for office, and I came across a woman in Elmhurst, and she was out gardening, and I told her who I was and what I was doing there, and she, she just said to me, she said, well, you know, do you know that Phil, that Phil Eisenberg? And I said, yes, I do. Why is that? And she said, because I think he's one of the most repugnant human beings that ever lived. And I said, well, I highly disagree with you. I think that, you know, Phil's one of the most erudite, smart, effective legislators we've ever had in this area, and, and I'm going to have to completely disagree with you. Well, about a week later, I was with Phil. I told him that story, thinking he's going to love me for it, and he says, Patrick, you're a fool. He said, the real answer is, you're right, that Phil Eisenberg, and that's so be. So yes, I, I share a lot of good memories with Phil. I often refer to him as the excuse or the reason not to have term limits, as he was termed out of the legislature, and we lost a great mind representing this area. So I thank you for giving me this opportunity, and he will be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Cerna, Supervisor Kennedy. And with that, our business is concluded, and I just want to wish everybody a, a happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas, happy holidays. It's been a wonderful year serving as Chair. I know I'll get to open the next meeting, but you won't have me to push around next year. So thank you all.
Oh, yes, we will.
And thank you to my colleagues as well. And with that, we will adjourn in memory of Penny Howard and Phil Eisenberg.